Well, congrats again.
The great commission that I have.
Mr. Clerk, how we doing? We're ready to start? All right. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to Tuesday, February 28, 2023 City Commission. Today's an incredible day to host a commission meeting. And we have so many blessings to say thank you for. I'd like to, before I get started, we invite the pastor up. I want to remind everyone that in today's commission meeting, as I always do, there is an opportunity for everyone to come and speak. I ask anyone in this community that would like to say something in reference to this city, business, any issues that they may be having. Not only can they visit me every Friday starting at 2:00, along with fellow, my fellow colleagues here who also do open office hours, they can also visit us at our town hall meetings, which happen multiple times a year. We make ourselves available and also during the commission meetings, we offer one hour, one hour of uninterrupted time for residents, business owners, concerned citizens, advocates, anyone who's interested in joining us to provide their input and guidance on how we can make the city better. With that being said, I'd like to start off this morning with the privilege of having Pastor Ryan Reed from Christ Journey Church join us. Pastor, this is not the first time you've been here, and it is a blessing, a blessing to have you back here in the city beautiful.
Thank you very much. It's always so good to be with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. And truly, I am so grateful for each and every single one of you. I am one of the pastors at Christ Journey Church on Anastasia Segovia, just a half mile from here, and I live at 3130 Segovia. So I am a citizen of the city beautiful and just so much appreciate your leadership in our city. You might, you might already know this, but a few years ago, Harvard University launched an initiative called the Human Flourishing Project to identify the key areas that human beings need to thrive. And you won't be surprised to hear what five areas they identified. Happiness and life satisfaction, mental and physical health, meaning and purpose, character and virtue, and close social relationships. Each one of these areas need intentional development for human beings to experience life to the full. To flourish means reaching the heights of one's potential, showing respect and dignity for other human beings, making judgments with sound character in mind. The project determined that in the same way that a good plant needs nutrition and good soil, each one of these five areas need the right environment to grow, including business, education, healthcare, and also churches and the government, working together toward this common vision. All together, we have a part in shaping what human flourishing looks like in our society and in our city beautiful. So may I encourage you today with the words of the Apostle Paul, who taught all of us to lead a life worthy of our calling for each one of you have been called to do this good work. Each one of you have been called to lead, each one of you have been called to steward your influence and to lead at this level, to make decisions with courage and confidence and also with humility. And so as I pray for us, I just want to keep that in mind for each and every single one of us, that we all share a common vision to help the citizens and residents of our city beautiful flourish together. Would you join me in praying? Lord Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity today. We thank you for this day. It is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And we are so thankful that we can gather today to make the decisions that you need us to make, to steward the influence that you have called us to steward and help every person within our sphere of influence and care receive what they need to experience life to the full. And so, Lord, I pray your blessing over each one of these leaders. I pray that your hand would be on them. I pray that you would bless this time together. We offer it to you in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen. Thank you all very much.
Pastor, thank you. Let me tell you really briefly, that's one of the nicest, most beautiful ways to express blessings that I've heard in a long, long time. I think it's a great way to start the day, especially when you see around us so much negativity. And it's a good opportunity to refocus ourselves in what we love to do, which is service, and always reminding ourselves that we're, we may have a lot of shortcomings, or we may have a lot of hurdles, or we may have a lot of problems, maybe best said, but at the end of the day, we have a lot of gifts to be grateful for.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, my friend. I appreciate you being here. Thank you for your time. I know you took time out of your day to be here, and it's a blessing to have you. Thank you. I'll never call you Commissioner, even though it says it here. Mayor Casey, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation and protocol documents. The first item on today's agenda is a very special item. Today, we celebrate life. Today, we celebrate an individual who has given everything that that person has, not only in treasure, but also in stewardship and guidance and respect. How do you honor somebody who has provided buildings, has provided parks, has lent, has lent advice to so many people in this community, has opened his checkbook to the tune of millions of dollars in Coral Gables? I kind of feel a little bit ashamed that I was telling the family of Mr. Fuel that we're going to fall short today, because even though it's a simple resolution of condolences, we can never give the proper respect to the Fuel family, especially in this incredible loss. So I want to read this simple resolution, and I welcome my colleagues and I welcome the family to please join us. Whereas October 31, 1926, in Miami, Florida, Marion Guthrie-Fuel was a kind and generous spirit, a philanthropist, who will be remembered for her love of community. And whereas married in 1943 to the love of her life, Robert Fuel, Marion and Bob went to build their home in the city beautiful in 1961, where they resided for over 60 years and raised with their daughter Carol. And raised with their daughter Carol, excuse me. And whereas a devoted wife and loving mother, Marion loved to travel and was even a gourmet cook, but her greatest pleasure was being able to give back to the community that she so dearly loved, the city of Coral Gables. And whereas with generous donations to education and healthcare, donations of land for what is well known as Fuel Park and funding for the Coral Gables Museum, Principal Gallery, the Robert and Marion Fuel Gallery, Marion's legacy will continue to live in all corners of the city beautiful. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commission of the City of Coral Gables, Florida, that we extend our heartfelt sympathy to the bereaved family on this occasion of their great loss. And witness whereof I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Coral Gables to be affixed this 28th day of February of 2023. Thank you very much. Please join us. Please, not for the podium. We welcome you. I'd like to hear just some words, if you would, if you would enlighten us a little bit about, for those who don't know, the fingerprints that were left by your family in this community.
Well, I was only 13 when we, my parents built the house there on South Greenway. And so they've had the house over 60 years now. It's, it's, will always be home. I'm going to work with an architect and my father liked it just like it was. I've made plans for him and everything. Why don't we change this? Oh, no, this is my home. I want it exactly like it is. And it is 60 years old, so you can imagine how much renovation we need to do. But mom loved it, dad loved it, and I love it. You know, changing it will be a different home. So not so sure I want to do that too fast, but we love Coral Gables. And it was very different than when we started out living there than it is today. It was like a little village, we used to call it. Now it's a very sophisticated international city, and we tried to grow with it. And consequently, whenever we saw an area that we could be helpful to Coral Gables, it was our pleasure, if we could, to give a helping hand. And I would read how this all started with a museum and the park and other things, is I would read in the neighbors, different things that the Commission was trying to do, but they just needed the funding to do it. And my parents spent the summers and part of the fall in North Carolina. So I would call dad and say, listen, dad, you know, I just read that the Kurdochs want more green space in Coral Gables. And, you know, we're in real estate. That's, that's our forte. I want, and of course, having an idea is one thing. The hard part is seeing it through. And my dad would immediately get on this, and he would start looking at every vacant lot that he could find in Coral Gables to try to make it a park. And this was a residential home site on Granada and Caraway. That wasn't a park area. So it was a great location because it's close to where he lived, we lived. And so that's how the park started. And how the museum started is for several years, I kept reading how we wanted to put an historical museum in Coral Gables. And, but the funding was never there. I mean, this went on for like eight years. And I, we have
Business owners, concerned citizens, advocates, anyone who's interested in joining us to provide their input and guidance on how we can make the city better. With that being said, I'd like to start off this morning with the privilege of having Pastor Ryan Reed from Christ Journey Church join us. Pastor, this is not the first time you've been here, and it's a blessing, a blessing to have you back here in the city beautiful.
Thank you very much. It's always so good to be with you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. And truly, I am so grateful for each and every single one of you. I am one of the pastors at Christ Journey Church on Anastasia and Segovia, just a half mile from here. And I live at thirty-one thirty Segovia. So I am a citizen of the city beautiful and just so much appreciate your leadership in our city. You might, you might already know this, but a few years ago Harvard University launched an initiative called the Human Flourishing Project to identify the key areas that human beings need to thrive. And you won't be surprised to hear what five areas they identified. Happiness and life satisfaction, mental and physical health, meaning and purpose, character and virtue, and close social relationships. Each one of these areas need intentional development for human beings to experience life to the full. To flourish means reaching the heights of one's potential, showing respect and dignity for other human beings, making judgments with sound character in mind. The project determined that in the same way that a good plant needs nutrition and good soil, each one of these five areas need the right environment to grow, including business, education, healthcare, and also churches and the government, working together toward this common vision. All together, we have a part in shaping what human flourishing looks like in our society and in our city beautiful. So may I encourage you today with the words of the Apostle Paul, who taught all of us to lead a life worthy of our calling, for each one of you have been called to do this good work. Each one of you have been called to lead, each one of you have been called to steward your influence and to lead at this level, to make decisions with courage and confidence and also with humility. And so as I pray for us, I just want to keep that in mind for each and every single one of us, that we all share a common vision to help the citizens and residents of our city beautiful flourish together. Would you join me in praying? Lord Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity today. We thank you for this day. It is the day that you have made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. And we are so thankful that we can gather today to make the decisions that you need us to make, to steward the influence that you have called us to steward and help every person within our sphere of influence and care receive what they need to experience life to the full. And so, Lord, I pray your blessing over each one of these leaders. I pray that your hand would be on them. Pray that you would bless this time together. We offer it to you in your name, Lord Jesus. Amen. Thank you all very much.
Pastor, thank you. Let me tell you really briefly, that's one of the probably the nicest, most beautiful ways to express blessings that I've heard in a long, long time.
Thank you.
I think it's a great way to start the day, especially when you see around us so much negativity. And it's a good opportunity to to refocus ourselves in what we love to do, which is service. And always reminding ourselves that we're, we may have a lot of shortcomings, or we may have a lot of hurdles, or we may have a lot of problems. Maybe best said, but at the end of the day, we have a lot of gifts to be grateful for.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, my friend. I appreciate you being here. Thank you for your time. I know you took time out of your day to be here, and it's a blessing to have you. Thank you. I'll never call you Commissioner, even though it says it here. Mayor Casey, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Presentation and protocol documents. The first item on today's agenda is a very special item. Today, we celebrate life. Today, we celebrate an individual who has given everything that that person has, not only in treasure, but also in stewardship and guidance and respect. How do you honor somebody who has provided buildings, has provided parks, has lent, has lent advice to so many people in this community, has opened his checkbook to a tune of millions of dollars in Coral Gables? I kind of feel a little bit ashamed that I was telling the family of Mr. Fuel that we're going to fall short today. Because even though it's a simple resolution of condolences, we can never give the proper respect to the Fuel family, especially in this incredible loss. So I want to read this simple resolution, and I welcome my colleagues and I welcome the family to please join us. Whereas October thirty-first nineteen twenty-six in Miami, Florida, Marion Guthrie Fuel was a kind and generous spirit, a philanthropist, who will be remembered for her love of community. And whereas married in nineteen forty-three to the lover of her life, Robert Fuel, Marion and Bob went to build their home in the city beautiful nineteen sixty-one, where they resided for over sixty years and raised with their daughter Carol. And raised with their daughter Carol, excuse me. And whereas a devoted wife and loving mother, Marion loved to travel and was even a gourmet cook. But her greatest pleasure was being able to give back to the community that she so dearly loved, the city of Coral Gables. And whereas with generous donations to education and healthcare, donations of land for what is well known as Fuel Park and funding for the Coral Gables Museum, Principal Gallery, the Robert and Marion Fuel Gallery, Marion's legacy will continue to live in all corners of the city beautiful. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commission of the City of Coral Gables, Florida, that we extend our heartfelt sympathy to the bereaved family on this occasion of their great loss. And witness whereof I have hereon to set my hand and cause to seal the city of Coral Gables to be affixed this twenty-eighth day of February of twenty twenty-three. Thank you very much. Please join us. Please, not for the podium. We welcome you. I, I'd like to hear just some words if you would, if you would enlighten us a little bit about, for those who don't know, the, the fingerprints that were left by your family in this community.
Well, I was only thirteen when we, my parents built the house there on South Greenway. And so they've had the house over sixty years now. It's, it's, will always be home. I'm going to work with an architect and it, my father liked it just like it was. I've made plans for him and everything. Why don't we change this? Oh, no, this is my home. I want it exactly like it is. And it is sixty years old. So you can imagine how much renovation we need to do. But mom loved it, dad loved it, and I love it. You know, changing it will be a different home. So not so sure I want to do that too fast. But we love Coral Gables. And it was very different than when we started out living there than it is today. It was like a little village, we used to call it. Now it's a very sophisticated international city. And we tried to grow with it. And consequently, whenever we saw an, an area that we could be helpful to Coral Gables, it was our pleasure, if we could, to, to give a helping hand. And I would read how this all started with a museum and the park and, and other things. Is I would read in the neighbors, different things that the commission was trying to do, but they just needed the funding to do it. And my parents spent the summers and, and part of the fall in North Carolina. So I would call dad and, and say, listen, dad, you know, I just read that the curdochs want more green space in Coral Gables. And, you know, we're in real estate. That's, that's our forte. I want, and of course, having an idea is one thing. The, the hard part is seeing it through. And my dad would immediately get on this. And he would start looking at every vacant lot that he could find in Coral Gables to try to make it a park. And this was a residential home site on Granada and Coral Way. That wasn't a park area. So it was a great location because it's close to where he lived, we lived. And so that's how the park started. And how the museum started is for several years, I kept reading how we wanted to put an historical museum in Coral Gables. And, but the funding was never there. I mean, this went on for like eight years. And I, we have, we're a family that is a historical family in the state of Florida. We came to Florida before it was a state. And you have to show your family bibles to prove this to Tallahassee. And then they honor you in a special group of people that arrived here before Florida was a state. So dad pursued this for two years. And I said, you know, if you're interested in that, you would be interested in this historical museum that Coral Gables wants to, wants to put in. And one thing led to two, and now we have the museum. So it was, it was a family effort of love for this community. And, and of course, mother was always right there too, lending a, an ear to my father. That's a good idea. You should listen to Carol. She's, that, that's an excellent suggestion. And we're just so happy to have fulfilled our dream before dad died. And, and mother just, you know, was so proud in those days when watching it go up. I was just mentioning earlier, it was like watching a baby being born, you know, brick by brick of seeing that building finally finished. Very exciting time for, for us. So it was our gift as well as the Gables gift is how we look at it. And thank you.
Carol, thank you for your, for your beautiful words. I want to, if I can be honest with you, I think the biggest gift that your family has given outside of the incredible museum and all the money they've donated is that park on Granada and Coral Way.
Thank you.
Visit that park all the time because it's a very interesting park. If you, if you take a chance, people drive by and they don't really understand that is full of native plants. And it's a park that again, doesn't really have that much open space, but it has a lot of ground cover. And that is a real Florida. That's the way Florida used to be. If you go to certain other areas in the city, not in the city, excuse me, upstate Florida, mid Florida, maybe in some pine ra- rock land areas, you'll see the real Florida. The palmetto, the Florida, Florida pine trees. And that to me is something that we're trying to relive. I have, I have a piece of property that are very similar to that, adjacent to my, to my house, about two acres. That's in private hands across from University of Miami on San Amaro. And those, those jewels, those jewels need to be preserved. And I really, everyone in this commission, especially the vice mayor, has really been advocating and pushing, and we've been expanding on the idea of having a lot more green space. The idea that you bought that piece of property years ago, you put it into the public trust, that's a multimillion dollar piece of property now. The city could not afford on Granada and Coral Way. So I just want to say thank you for that. Not, we don't say thank you enough. But your family's commitment to the museum is incredible, to parks. Just the name alone elevates the standard here in the city beautiful. So I just want to honestly, on behalf of the commission and the city, say thank you. And we fall short, but we say thank you for, for your family. Thank you so much.
Well, any way we can maintain that park would be my pleasure, truly. I've talked to my assistant here many times about that. Whenever I see it needs work or something, I say, well, you know, I'm still here. And while I'm here, I'd like to make sure it's maintained nicely. When that park started, the city, the Public Works Department came to me and said, well, what do you envision here? What is it supposed to be? And I said, well, let me see. I picture a lady with a little baby. And she's wheeling her little baby around and she's, doesn't want to sit home anymore. She wants to go out and have a sandwich and sit outside in a park. And so if you do that, I need a sidewalk. And I need her to sit on a bench and make sure she has a garbage can next door because she's going to have all these wrappings from her sandwiches and the baby's food. And if you can do that, I think it would be a lovely neighborhood gesture for her to be able to enjoy this area. So that's exactly what they did. So if you're ever wondering how the sidewalk got there and these benches and, and Raul just replaced those benches, got Public Works to replace the benches. They were looking pretty seedy about now. So now we have new benches for this purpose. And any way that the city could enjoy the park is, is absolutely our pleasure.
Mr. Manager, can you do me a favor before the commission speaks? Can we make sure that, you know, we take a look over really quickly on the park? I know it's supposed to kind of look natural, but I want to make sure it's in pristine condition.
I'll have our city landscape architect review it.
Thank you very much.
Right. One moment.
Commission, please.
Your dream came true because, you know, thirty-five years ago, I had my kids. I was going through there with a stroller.
Is that right?
I would stop at that part.
Oh, my goodness.
And sit, you know, and relax. And it's enjoyable. I mean, we have some native host plants in there for butterflies now. The park does need some work. I was going to bring that up with Dina. We have a dead pine tree in there. And it's time for, you know, the call, the dead one out and put some new, new growth underneath.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
What a nice story. Thank you.
I just want to add, I relate on many levels with the work that your family has done. You mentioned the family home of sixty years needing renovations. I'm sixty. I personally need my own renovations. And I feel it every day. But your family represents the Coral Gables I grew up in. I was always in awe of families that, like your family, has a vision of what we could be and what we could do. But the difference between your family and a lot of families that have vision, you actually do it. And that's the Coral Gables I grew up in. And I hope that your family's story and your family's legacy inspires current families, the younger families that grew up here, to come back and give back in ways that your family did and hopefully take things even to another level. Because without your family's effort, without your family's, the, the ways you benefited our community, we wouldn't be Coral Gables. So on behalf of the commission, or at least on behalf of me personally and my family, thank you for being an inspiration to everyone.
Well, you know, you are the commission and we need your ideas. And how all of our projects got started is because we read about them in the neighbors. So you come up with ideas, make sure the neighbors print them. So people, you know, all our citizens can read about this and go, gee, you know, I, I fit into this category. This could be something that I could do for the community. And that's how things get started. And, you know, miracles happen. All of a sudden, big changes occur. So keep doing what you're doing.
And if you notice, we started the meeting, I try to always mention that we're here to listen, that we're here to interact with the residents. We give multiple opportunities. So what you're saying is, you know, there's a, there's a good point in that, you know, there's a good point. And some of our best ideas and city programs have come through residents, employees, members of the business community engaging with us and bringing us these ideas, and we, we've taken action on them. So thank you.
Coral Gables has great people that would love to know where to fit in. They just don't know exactly where that should be. And when you all come up with important areas that need attention, need concern, you'd be surprised at how many people are going to read that and go, well, you know, I could help there. But when we don't know, you know, maybe we're not as clever as you all that sit around thinking about this all the time. We have busy lives and, you know, we're, we're trying to run our own families. But all we need is some good ideas and, and hopefully, you know, miracles will happen. So thank you very much for today.
Can we take a quick photo so I, so we can share this?
Yes, certainly. I'd like to thank you very much for your kindness. This was a very, very thoughtful thing to do.
Elvis wanted to say a few words.
Elvis is in the building.
Elvis is in the building, yeah?
Hi, good morning. Sorry, good morning, everyone. And just very briefly, because I don't want to delay this more, but I just want to emphasize and, and thank on the, on behalf of the museum, not only to the Fuel family, but also especially Carol Fuel, that since, since I started and I'm, and I know that much before, she has been like a guardian angel. And I have to say, really, that's how it feels, that she's always paying attention to what's happening with the museum. If there is any discussion, we, once in a while, we receive an email from, from Carol encouraging us and doing certain things. And I really want to thank her for that. And not only because of course we're honoring her mom today, we receive also her support, not only Marion, but also Carol. And just recently, when she learned that we were working with some upgrades that we need in the Fuel Gallery and all over the museum, she just recently donated a very important amount. It's going to really help us do some of that work. First last year, ten thousand dollars. And that was just after we invited her to come to our, our gala. She couldn't come. But she donated that so we could put together a successful event. And just recently, we received a donation of one hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars for the upgrade of, of the museum. So I really want to thank her. And, and again, it's not just her mom. It's really the, the whole family, of course, Carol keeping up on that legacy of giving back to the community. Thank you.
I forgot to mention, and I think it's important, after this amazing presentation proclamation that, and it popped into my mind, civic involvement is about bringing people together and bringing our community together. Civic involvement is not dividing us and tearing us apart. And I think that's important. I think we've lost, sometimes we lose our ways, and that family is a perfect example of what civic involvement is. It's bringing people together to make a better today, make a better future, and for, especially for our kids with parks and everything. I just, I thought it was important to put that on the record.
Commissioner, I really value your comments. Thank you for that. Thank you so much. Moving on to A two, something again that I think is going to be really special and I'm very excited about. It's the presentation of the Moon Over the Gables by the Coral Gables Community Foundation. So I invite Mary Snow to join us, our staff who's here. Belkies, good morning. This is a project that I'm very excited about. And it, again, speaks volumes about how the city of Coral Gables is stepping up in regards to culture and driving people from all over this community here to the city beautiful to really enjoy the city beautiful, enjoy all our amenities, our great restaurants, our very clean and beautiful downtown, which I give staff all the credit. But this is just going to be again, another opportunity just to really enjoy the city beautiful. So take it away, staff.
Good morning, everybody, mayor, commissioners, city managers, city attorney. We're so happy to be partnering with you once again on Moon Over the Gables. Coming to you from the team that brought you Umbrella Sky, Belkies and I and your wonderful staff, we're thrilled to be back. So thank you for your support. And we have some slides and information to share with you this morning. So Moon Over the Gables is a presentation of Luke Jerem's Museum of the Moon. Luke is an artist based out of the UK. Thank you. The project has been featured all over the world in places such as Milan, Tokyo, Paris, Dubai. It's currently in Phoenix, Arizona, being sent to us now. After we host it, we will send it on to Germany. Let me go to the next slide. So this is the artist. The moon is a twenty-three foot in diameter replica of the moon featuring NASA imagery of the lunar surface. It is an inflatable moon. It appears when you're under it or near it to be an actual moon's surface. It's really, really cool. And we love the placement of it in Pont Circle Park because not only will you look up and be able to, you know, bring a beach blanket or beach chair and sit under the moon, but when you're driving on ponds from either direction, it's going to be quite impressive, we feel. So the impact in keeping with the strategic goals of the city and the mayor's strategic goals for his term, we feel that this moon will bring so much cultural and economic opportunity to the city as we provide free and unique experiences under the moon. We want everything to be free and open to the public, family friendly. Again, the moon, the moon has been in Barcelona, New York, London, Milan, Paris, and in Mexico. We have really fun events planned in partnership, working with the city and Belkies's office with Books and Books. We have the family movie screening of E.T. in partnership with the Coral Gables Art Cinema. We will have moon pies on the first night. We will have book readings of Good Night Moon and different astrology and moon focused books by Books and Books and the Frost Museum Sanctuary of the Arts will perform a ballet one evening. So we have a lot of nice and family friendly events planned. There was a city in North Carolina with similar demographics to ours that hosted the moon for nine days, drawing forty thousand visitors and leveraging two point four million dollars in economic impact for the local community. And we'll be able to provide that information to you as well, once, once our exhibit is over. So here are some photos of the moon and other locations. You can see it's quite impressive. We're really, really excited, very excited about that. And here is a very elementary rendering of what it'll look like done by my office. But that's, that's what the plan is, what it'll look like. And Belkies, Belkies's team. And thank you to Peter and Belkies for overseeing the trust aspect of this event. So any questions for us? We're here. We're excited. The moon is landing on March ninth, next Thursday night. We'll have an opening reception and, and sort of plug in of the moon, if you will, on the ninth, next Thursday night. So the moon will be with us in Coral Gables for three consecutive weekends, Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, coming down on March twenty-fifth. We'll also engage local students from our schools. Crystal Academy will have a special evening with us for their families and their students. So we're just thrilled. We're really, really thrilled.
That's great that you, I was going to mention something about that in regards to our schools, but
Yes, yes, for sure.
Just by having Crystal Academy be able to enjoy this, I think it's such a huge benefit, not only for the kids, but for us.
Oh, for sure.
I love, I love to see the excitement.
Me too.
From the kids.
Me too. It'll be fabulous. So thank you for your support and we're just thrilled.
Belkies.
We're just asking for your support. But as you can see, the moon is also lit from within. So there is going to be a, just like you do a tree lighting, we hope to do a plug-in lighting of the moon. So that's going to be interesting as well.
Beautiful.
Do we need a motion?
Beautiful.
I just want to say it's spectacular. I just think at night, anybody driving south on ponds, you may put a warning moon ahead because if they turn and they see that, they may drive into the, they may drive into a tree.
That's cute. Oh, God.
Yeah.
How are you going to publicize this outside of the Gables? What's your marketing plan?
So we have engaged a firm, the Community Foundation has engaged a firm for traditional media and the city and Martha's office is handling social media. And we're going to be sharing all of our work and, you know, cross promoting all of our work. But Deco Drive has expressed interest in covering the opening night. Community newspapers featured it on their cover this week. The Miami Herald, it was in the neighbors section two Sundays ago. So it's out there. We're, we're posting this and pushing this from the, the artist standpoint, from the community gathering standpoint, from the education standpoint. So we're really hitting on all angles to promote this.
Great.
The good thing about this also is, as you said, it's happening at Pont Circle Park. That's really the end of our central business district. We're pushing our traffic over there, which is nice to see as well, since there's so much activity in that area.
Good. Just a few, few points, and I'd like to thank the Parks Department along with the Works Department in advance. All the works, parks, landscaping, any departments that are engaged in bringing this to a reality or economic development department, the manager's office. This is gonna be important, and just again, continues to send the message that we're open for business. We're trying to, we're, we're an inclusive community, we wanna bring people here so they can enjoy it, especially families. We're a family community, and this is gonna be a great opportunity to bring us a lot of people together. This may be a ridiculous question, but I'll ask it anyways. Do we have plans, one way or another, to protect the moon at night or during the day from vandalism or from anything that may be occurring? Because we see some pretty ridiculous acts of stupidity
Yes.
that happen out throughout Miami-Dade County, and I can potentially foresee something happening here in this beautiful event.
So our plan is that the moon will rise every night at 5:00 PM and it will come down at 11:00 PM.
Okay.
So that's our plan.
You always gotta cover, right?
For that.
You always gotta cover.
No, that's our plan, and if, you know, if, if, if we think we wanna keep it up because it's fragile and we maybe wanna keep it up Thursday through Saturday, I'll hire overnight security.
I said, I would love to see it at night, so people can drive by and see it. And I think it's worth considering that maybe on the weekend, like you said, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Thursday, do Saturday night at midnight type thing.
Yeah. Do something interesting like that, I just.
Security would be probably
I need to hire, I know, I know.
On the, on the topic of security, as far as like, you know, in terms of the crosswalks and people getting and accessing Pont Circle, you know, obviously, you're gonna attract a lot of kids in particular, what are we planning on that respect?
So we have met with, with, with Belkeys and Mary on all the different event plans, and we're looking at, there's different things. You have concerts, we have the movie that we're moving over there. So we're, actually, we're meeting again on Friday, we're going over the final logistics, and we're gonna look at that. I know that we've, police is part of our meetings, and we'll look at how we're gonna do the access to the crosswalks, because whenever we do something there, that's a concern. So we're gonna look at that and have a plan for that.
Okay. Vice Mayor, a special events plan includes public safety.
So I forgot to mention police and fire also. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your commitment.
It's the whole, the whole city, all the committees, we've met with them, and we're gonna do, we're gonna have another meeting this Friday, and we're gonna discuss final details on all the event specifics, so like the concert, the movie, and everything else.
One last point, Belkeys, just for you, I mean, I imagine you have it covered already, but this is gonna be a great opportunity to take a lot of pictures, drone shots, to really publicize what the city's doing, especially with the Agave Project and, and our downtown, the shape that it's coming in, you know, all the new landscaping, the clean sidewalks. I think it's an opportunity to really showcase our downtown, and we could potentially use this as some sort of marketing material for one thing or another that we may be engaging in in the future, so.
A hundred percent, Mayor. So Mary has already put up a website, it's called Moon Over the Gables.
Awesome.
So that's gonna be our landing page for this project, but we are gonna go out and take pictures. There's drone shots that we can get as well. We've already taken some drone shots of the area for other purposes, but I think that's a great idea. And obviously, we'll, we're gonna be taking pictures and really trying to market this these three weeks as it becomes, as it's here.
Do me a favor, send, send, you know, photos, material to the commission, to their offices, because we all use social media, multiple different platforms. I wanna make sure we get it across so that, again, we're just stacking the social media to make sure everybody's aware of this. This is gonna be something that people are gonna look back and among and say, "Oh my god, I missed this." I wanna make sure people don't miss this opportunity to come together as a community.
As soon as you have the sort of schedule of events, like the actual, you know, make sure we get that so we can push it out there.
Are we gonna have extra trolleys? Because I can imagine the traffic's gonna be tremendous. You're gonna have more trolleys, bring people in from the, from the metro and from the Eighth Street?
We will, we will look at that, we'll discuss it with, with Kevin, and that'll be part of our, our meeting when we meet, to look at what the transport plan is. We are working with police on that, there's an MOT that's involved with that, if we think we're gonna have a large-scale attendance that's gonna affect streets, which is possible. In terms of the pictures and stuff, we will have, you know, like we always do with events, especially the, the different types of concerts, we'll have our staff, city staff, will do the lives like we do for other events that we've done in the past. So we'll look at doing that as well.
And we hired a photographer, and we'll share everything, of course.
So I have a follow-up question for you, you know, would help us with the social media too. You're gonna have instructions for, you know, park here, cross here, this is where you can cross in, so then people that are coming from outside of the city, or even in our city, know where the, you know, the parking spaces are and how to easily cross over to Pont Circle Park.
We need to do that.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that we should put on the, on the website, and that's when we talk with Kevin and get those parking garages and the different access points. We need to put that in on the website.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. This is a great idea, as always, excited. This is a really cool event, and I think it's gonna be really well-received, so the pictures from the other cities really look incredible.
Yep. It'd be incredible. Thank you so much.
Great project. We need a
Do we need a motion or anything, or no?
Motion?
Emotional support if you
No, we support.
We love it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We, we don't have any approval of minutes, so we'll move on to mayor's comments before we go to our time, starting at 10 o'clock. So I have three points that I'd like to make today in regards to mayor's comments. I'd like to congratulate the mayor's council for their hard work. They brought something to my attention, which is something that I have been talking about for some time with staff, and that is the opportunity of installing defibrillators in our parks. A lot of other, a lot of the other institutions are doing this, a lot of the other cities are doing it. I know it's costly, there may be some fears about vandalism or about theft, but one of the things that I've been talking about, and I wanna make my colleagues aware of it, is I'd like to see a camera at every single one of our parks. I mentioned that to the ACM yesterday, I mentioned to the city manager yesterday, we're already talking about that for North Gables in regards to problem areas where we see a lot of illegal dumping. It will pay itself off when you stop the illegal dumping. It will also send a very strong message that just because the police is not there, because they're on patrol, there is a set of eyes and ears there, which again will be more redundancy for the police and in their efforts to keeping the crime the lowest it's been in potentially over a decade. So I think this could be, there could be two tools at every park. Number one, a defibrillator, and number two, a camera. This is something that I wanna bring before the commission, I wanna have it in this year's budget cycle, and I'm asking you to please consider it as one of your priorities, because I think it will pay significant dividends, not only as a potential life safety assistance in someone maybe having some sort of injury or having a stroke or a heart attack, but also I think it'll deter crime, it'll address issues of cleanliness, vandalism, not that we see it a lot, but we, you know, make sure it sends a strong message. So that's one thing that I want you to keep on your, that was brought to, by the, by the mayor's council. They gave me a lot of information about other municipalities and other cities that are doing this, and I think it's a good opportunity. So I ask you to please consider this, and I ask that the manager please bring us a budget item for our parks, and that includes the defibrillators along with the, the camera. We can put the defibrillator on the, on the pole, or we can do something to that effect.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Again, it's not gonna be cheap, but I think it's worth, worth doing it.
As I, Mayor, really quick, before you move on, on the AEDs, I saw a, a news feature story on Real Sports on HBO, actually, where they talk about kids' sports in particular and high schools throughout the country, and how the availability of AEDs when there is a cardiac event in those places, the, I, I forget what the exact statistics were, but it, the difference in a few minutes in having an AED applied to somebody in that situation is monumental, so I think it's a great idea.
Perfect.
It'd be great to hear how some of these other cities are, are implementing it.
Perfect. Well, I asked that, please, I asked that the manager prepare something over the next month to bring to the commission that addresses both the defibrillators and also addresses the, the, the cameras in all parks, please. Second point, I wanna commend the manager, and I wanna commend Raquel and her team. The city, in my opinion, should start educating residents about flood insurance and how the city's flood category went from a seven to a five, resulting in approximately a 25% credit of NFIP rates. We are fighting as a, as a commission, through the manager's office, through the leadership of the police and fire, through Raquel's team, and this is a testament to our efforts to try to save residents money. So I ask you to please, using Belkeys, using Martha, using every, every resource that we have, start educating the residents, send something out to the residents so they understand that we've gone from a seven to a five rating. This was another item that was covered in the mayor's council yesterday at 8:30, and I wanna thank the mayor's council again, J.C. Padron and everyone on the board for their efforts. Thank you for that, that's important, saving people money as prices are going up, as inflation continues. Number, number three, a little bit, a little bit more fun. Wings for Wishes. First off, thank you to staff for all your efforts to make this a reality. March 4th, this Saturday, is Wings for Wishes, the event that we've been doing, I sponsor it myself, my company, it's for Make-A-Wish. Sports Grill is, you know, the main sponsor of the event, along with a lot of other great companies. This is an opportunity, I'm seeing if the firefighters and the police are gonna engage and see if this year they, they have a respectable showing in regards to the wing-eating contest, because they seem to always lose to the commission. And we can have a timeline in regards to pictures on how the commission somehow, some way beats the firefighters and the police officers. So hopefully, maybe we'll give you a leg up, we'll come, we'll have breakfast that day, so we can give you a leg up. Do any of my colleagues in the commission wanna join me on a team this Saturday to see who can eat the most wings? Don't raise your hand up so fast.
No, no, yes.
All right? If not, I open it up to directors who wanna join me on the team. I'm paying for it myself personally, it's not coming from city funds, so.
I'll be there.
We'll enjoy it, we'll put something together. Support Wings for Wishes is a great cause, they raise hundreds of thousands of dollars, and 100% of everything that is raised, 100% goes to make dreams come true, wishes come true. The two individuals that started this charity I work out with, they pay all the cost out of their pocket. So every dollar that's raised, every single dollar that's raised goes into the organization. That is incredible, I don't think there's many organizations, charities that actually do that. The final issue, which I think is the most important issue of the day, I wanna read a quick statement, I wanted to make sure I got this correct. And I took the time to write this statement, and, because I wanted to be factually as proper and I don't miss a point. So I wanted to take this opportunity during the mayor's comments today to provide important information regarding the great job our Development Services Department is doing to serve the residents and businesses of Coral Gables. Recently, I've heard some noise and lots of misinformation regarding permitting, and I wanted to bring to light that these are simply unsupported opinions, or should I say bias, because there is no evidence or facts to back them up. Listen, if anybody can talk about permits, construction, engineering, design, it's me. It's just like somebody telling me that across UM, everything's happening, that's not the case. I live in front of UM, no one can tell me, I live the closest to UM. I know exactly what's going on. When you talk about permitting, I know exactly what's going on. I sit down with the permitting staff, I talk to contractors, I talk to architects. Is the system perfect? No, but trust me, we are making strides unlike any other city. Let us use data and numbers to help us learn the truth. Whether speaking as your mayor or as a businessman in the construction and engineering field, I rely on data to make quality decisions and to guide me to a better outcome. Analyzing data allows me to understand a situation. Our new Development Services Center is offering everyone wanting to work in the city the opportunity to visit a one-stop shop for all their building and permitting needs. This has greatly improved the customer experience, especially as the, as they transition to an all electronic review and submittal process. Not only can people obtain their permits, but they can, they can receive updates seamlessly, transparently. No more plans are being lost, now you can review multiple disciplines at the same time. Residents no longer must wait for their documents to travel from department to department for review. The review process, except for the Board of Architects, which will soon also be implemented in the digital submittals, is now fully digitized. This means all reviews can take place simultaneously, lifting one or more time-consuming aspect of the permitting process. The data or the numbers tell the story. This is the key. This is the key. The data or the numbers tell the story. The permitting process has improved, and the permits are being expedited. In 2022, the department reviewed 30,128 permits. Just in January 2023, 25,183 permit reviews were handled by the team. Let me repeat that for people in the back who may not be listening. In 2022, the department reviewed 30,128 permits. Just in January of 2023, the department reviewed 25,183 permit reviews were handled by the team. If we compare January 2022 to 2023, 9,035 were reviewed compared to 25,183 reviews that were completed this year using our new system, or an increase of more than 178%. Those are incredible numbers. Additionally, the team has reviewed more than 9,000 expired or pending permits from our previous systems, and just a small fraction remain to be reviewed to determine the next course of action. I will have Surami Cabrera come and speak about that, because I want you to understand the exact numbers and how much this team has done to really finalize these open permits. Surami, I wanna salute you and the Development Services Team, because I know this happened in spite of the fact that staff was being trained in the new system and working from temporary spaces. I know that people even worked from their cars at one point, because we transitioned everyone from this building down to the new building, which it took over a year and change to remodel, and we spent millions of dollars to make sure that it was a pleasant experience for the community to come in. So let's, do me a favor if you can, let's stop the noise and the misinformation, and let's listen to the facts. The numbers speak for themselves. There is, there is a way to get it to elected office in this city, and it's very simple. You gotta work hard, you gotta put a plan, you gotta address the needs of the residents, the employees, and the business community. You gotta listen to people, you gotta meet with people. Attacking people and using blogs is not gonna get you elected, it's not going to, it's not gonna work. It doesn't, it's never worked. When you dehumanize someone and you disrespect them, it shows a lot about your character and the lack of respect and civility and the type of person that you are. When I talk to staff and they explain to me, and I'm not talking about the directors, I'm talking about, you know, the entry-level individuals who one day will be the directors, one day will have your job, one day will be the mayor, who knows, or commissioner. The sense of pride in the work that they do is incredible. But when they read that they're being attacked, and they explain to me the facts, and they talk to me, you know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're addressing, we're moving to a world-class digital permitting process, we're renovating a brand-new building, we're dealing with all brand-new software, we're spending millions of dollars of upgrading our permitting process, and then people go out there and attack the process without the process having run its course. It's disingenuous. You're standing on the shoulders of employees and you're standing on the shoulders of a city for your own benefit. Surami, I apologize on behalf of people who have taken easy potshots in an effort to substantiate themselves because of their insecurities. You have taken on upon yourself in the last two years, just to give people an idea, how many open permits were here when you started?
So we had a system that we had, let me see, from 1997 to 2000, I think, six, 1991 to 2007, that was winter grade, and in there we had 6,000 expired permits, meaning that we don't know if the work was ever completed, we don't, you know, they just were, were abandoned, and
So you had to meet, you had to meet with every single resident, business owner, sit down, hash out the permit, find out where they were, you know?
We tried to not get anybody involved, the residents, because it's not pleasant for you to get a phone call telling you that, hey, 1993, you had a permit that was never closed out. So my staff and myself and George P., you know, a lot of us worked on this, went through every single permit to see what the permit was for, and if I had the authority as a building official to close it out, which in certain cases I do have that authority, and I did that for as many as I can, and then we went through and we looked for what are easy for us to close out without having to see the residents. So if you changed your windows or something we can see from the outdoors, and you're just missing a final building or a final zoning, we actually went out and did those inspections without the residents ever even finding out what happened.
Well, let me tell you, just so you know, being in the business, I had actual residents call me, and I had residents call me along with my colleagues in the commission and tell me, hey, I had a window permit that was 20 years old, my contractor made the mistake, or just it was an oversight, it happens, we all make mistakes every day, they didn't close my permit, or they thought they had, or it was left in a TCO, it wasn't left in a CO. So we had my window permit was still open, or my front door permit, or my kitchen permit, and that the inspectors came and knocked and said, hey, you have a permit that's open 20, that's 20 years old, 15 years old, we just need to kind of close it off for you. We actually have a refund for you, we actually have monies that came back to some of the residents, they told me. I hadn't, I didn't expect to get money back, and I actually got, because of bonds.
Because there were, there were bonds.
Because there were bonds that were pending, that were pending.
Correct. We did a lot, a lot of cleanup, and I don't think, we did it very quietly, so I don't so I don't think the residents or even, you know, my boss probably knows because I've complained a lot, uh, because we did this with the staff that we have and we, we're not allowed to shut down the building department and stop servicing all the residents and construction has been the best it's been in many, many years, so it's not like we've been slow on work, we have had a lot of work. So staff has had to be very, very creative, I've had to dig deep into, you know, what do I have authority to do and what I do not, and really, really weigh, um, not, I mean, I just can't close out a permit and put somebody in danger, right? So that would be the easy solution, but I can't do that. So it was, it's taken my full five years here, honestly, to
How many are we, how many are we at, Surami, right now, Ms. Cabrera?
Well, from the six thousand, we're down to maybe like five or ten, which are just, you know, you really never did finish the work, there are life safety concerns that, you know, we need to take care of, so we're working with those, we've sent them to code enforcement board, uh, we send a lot of expired permits, not a code enforcement board, they probably see more than they ever have in the past.
Can I ask you a quick question also, since you brought up code enforcement, I want to put all this in the record, because this is a, by the way, when this article came out and they just blasted all of staff to use, to use it as a platform item? Did anybody come and ask you questions to substantiate the claims that were made?
No, I have not been contacted.
Nobody ever, nobody ever contacted you, nobody asked you for documents, they just went and wrote all this and they said, you know, let's write and tarnish someone's reputation and disrespect them and take potshots because somehow, some way I'm going to be the savior and I'm going to come in and fix a permitting process that has taken you five years just to address thousands of expired permits. But you mentioned code enforcement, which is very interesting. So every single day, please speak freely as you always do, so every single day, what do I do? It's okay, you can put it on the record.
You are another code officer.
So I drive through the city on the way to work, I drive through the city to the work and I take pictures of code enforcement violations and I send them to Gabby and then Gabby sends them in an email, it's public record, to code enforcement, correct?
Right.
If we looked at today, if we looked at today with additional offers that we've hired, we've addition, we've hired additional officers, wait for our firefighters who we're, we're we're thank God they're doing a great job by saving somebody. If you look at the numbers in regards to code enforcement today and with the additional employees that we have, the people that we have now on weekends and all the stuff that we're doing, do you feel that today we have more code enforcement existing citations than we've ever had?
Yes, and actually it's interesting because, um, the way the sis, the old system was used is that it was used more like a timesheet than to track code enforcement citations. So if you ran a report in the old system, it would show that there were nine thousand citations, but if you went in there and read them, it was dropped off my vehicle for service, answered a phone call, those are not really citations, right? So when I saw that this was happening, when I started here, we started cleaning that up too, I mean, it's not just the building department that's required cleaning, you know, the digital, this database that we build, if it's not correct, the reports are useless and that's really what has been the issue here, we've had reporting that has been useless until maybe the last two or three months where we're really electronic and I could really follow through and see how many open permits do we have, what permits are overdue, what is an overdue permit?
And if I can add something else, because Remundo, who's a lot smarter than everybody in the room here, has implemented new technology in the city, right? So can you talk, and I'm trying to hit points so people understand the complexity of what you're dealing with. We now have a new software that basically goes into each property in the commercial district, right? And can tell you their development agreement, who's responsible for that tree, who's responsible for that sidewalk, uh, you know, encroachments, uh, issues like that, because that never existed and that had to be built, that was built by you, by staff, by Remundo's team. Remundo, can you add a little bit about that, because this all plays into the building department, it all plays into code enforcement and this has been worked on over the last two to three years.
Hard work by Director Cabrera and her, and her team to help us build all those technologies and all those solutions on land management, also asset management. And now we are doing core financial and we are bringing all that together into a platform.
So think about it, now you can click, before you were never able to do this, now you can click on a piece of property that was built twenty years ago, you can analyze your development agreement, the legal team has given their input and has provided, you know, their guidance on different fronts there. You can see existing citations, you can see code enforcement violations, you can see building permits, what has been done, what has not been done. So instead of having to go to fifteen different departments or ten different departments, now you have that, I might, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I want to be, we're doing this on the, on the record here, you can literally go to one repository right now, which is being built to provide that guidance to the city employees and to anybody who comes in and wants to know further information in regards to a property.
Including covenants, Mayor.
Including covenants.
Covenants, which is very important for code enforcement because we need to know if there's a covenant from the business owner or something to, um, to maintain the right of way so we know who we're supposed to be issuing a citation to. And that was a very lengthy process before, but we have been putting them all in GIS so that they could go into the property in the GIS, click on it, read the covenant, you know, and eventually we're going to take that further, but right now we have all those covenants in GIS.
Mayor, I believe a few commissions ago, uh, commission meetings ago, the, uh, the IT director showed the new, the new dashboard, it's got a tremendous amount of information. So not only do we have our world-class, uh, website, but we also have this dashboard for the, for the power users that has all that information, it also includes everything that, that code enforcement needs from, from a covenant perspective, from a zoning perspective. When we, when we started the, the project on four twenty-seven, those people moved over here.
Yep.
Right, we had people on top of each other on the third floor, we had the mezzanine full.
Hold on, but you're, you're forgetting something, the roof in this building hadn't been replaced in what, can I say it, forty years, fifty years?
Yes.
Yes.
The roof was leaking, the entire roof of this building, the exterior facade except the windows, which we're hoping for a grant to harden this building from the state of Florida, I hope, you know, the governor's listening and our state representatives and our senators, thank you for your hard work. The roof was replaced, employees had to endure the roof being replaced.
Yes.
Through, through that process, this, this building was stacked with people because a result that we had to take everybody out of that building and move them over here for over a year.
We had code enforcement working out of, out of their cars because we had to move everybody out and really everybody works with each other, so they need to be close to each other. So now we have a one-stop shop, the New City has a one-stop shop, we've, we've, we've got a, a world-class enterprise program, uh, inter, uh, intergov, we have electronic plan review, and so all these things, we're, they, they just don't bring, uh, technology, but technology brings, brings the best practice. So we, uh, as we adopt the technology, we're adopting best practices. So this is really a new way of doing business for, for our city. It's not just technology, it's the fact that, that we, that we've looked at all our methods and adopted a, a best practice for all our methods. So as all these things are, are implemented and our staff gets more experienced, we'll be more, more, uh, uh, efficient, we just moved, we just finished TCO, uh, we just finished the, the, uh, we moved in under a TCO to get there as quick as possible and we just, and, and we finished our TCO last month, so, our CO, excuse me. So, uh, it, it is, is a one-stop shop, it's, it's something that, that no, that no other city has and, and as the department gets more versed and versed in this technology, we'll be, we'll be more and more efficient.
What you were training here with, Surami, yeah, you want to add something, Remundo, or did you want to say anything else, or?
No, just to say that, like Mr. Manager said, so we are bringing all the platforms together because we want to horizontally integrate all the systems to have one place to go and to find out the information. And data is very powerful, so having that insight from dashboards that are live, that connect all the systems at any given moment, gives us the operational efficiencies that we need, so in real time. That's a big difference that we have been trying to make over, over the years, working together with all departments, with Polyworks too, because we are bringing a lot of GIS and asset management from Polyworks, and so we are inte- integrating all the platforms together.
And I, I want to thank Remundo because I drive him crazy, um, I complain a lot and I see somebody has something that works really well and I want it for us and he always says yes, I mean, I don't know if people know, but you could actually go online and see what the wait times are at the building department, real time. So, you know, you know what time of day, there's times of day where we're empty and there's times of day where you're going to wait a very long time, I don't know why it happens this way, but you could actually, I went to Remundo, I said, could we put our wait times online? Let me find out, a week later, he had wait times online. So we're, every day
How fast, how fast are we right now in regards to permits, would you say?
Are, are we in what?
How are we, how are we doing now in regards to wait times for a permit? I know there's a different complex permits, everything from a building to, to a simple,
Yeah, no, but we set deadlines depending on, like I have set deadlines depending on the type of work class, which is something we could do with Winter Gray, so if you're coming in for a re-roof, we try to turn it around in twenty-four hours, if you're coming in for a new home, thirty days, um, because, and, and you have to remember the numbers that I'm giving you are numbers only for the building department, but there's fire, there's public works, there's historic.
There's germ.
Yeah, there's outside agencies that we have no control over and, um, you know, fire looks at every single commercial project that we do, historic looks at anything that's a demolition or anything that's designated historic and now they're going to start looking at anything that's pre-nineteen fifty because we want to salvage our historic properties even if they're not designated. So there's a lot of things that we're changing and doing, but there's a lot of departments that are involved that are not the building department, but that they also do a lot of reviews and are doing a lot of inspections and, you know, it's getting everybody to work together.
If I, if I just may add something too, again, not making excuses, let's talk about the reality here, right? So twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the market to hire people has been very difficult. Are you short-staffed?
Yes, we are.
You've lost
We, we have been short-staffed for the structural plan reviewer for a couple of years and it's very difficult, we have been, the city of Coral Gables, the, both the city manager and myself have contributed, and, and actually Douglas also has been a part of it, we participated with the county roundtable and the building officials of all Miami-Dade County to try to address this issue because there is such a severe shortage of structural plans examiners. And we actually put forward, uh, the county, I think is putting it in the March agenda, the changes to the legislation for the requirements of a structural plans examiner, which do not reduce the standards because we don't want to reduce the standard, right? No, there's, I don't think there's, I, I see some of these that the state does and I just don't understand after, you know, surfside tragedies happen, how you could think that reducing standards is actually better, but we are matching the qualifications to the requirement of the job and that is going to have a huge, make a huge difference on the job market for us.
If I may add something to that, I want to give credit to the manager, uh, the manager this week, uh, met with Commissioner Regalado from the county, Commissioner Regalado will be sponsoring an item in the commission in March, she's, I met with her also to address other issues throughout the city. Uh, but these are examples of things that people don't find out that staff and the manager are working on every single day to try to streamline the process. Because again, we're dealing with shortages of employees, we're dealing with issues, uh, in regards to a brand-new technology that was just implemented, we moved back into a brand-new building that was just built and you're seeing the numbers. So to me, and I don't want to belabor the point too much, unless you'd like to add something else, Mr. Manager.
And may, may I say, Mayor, we've been working very closely with the county to look at, at the Board of Rules and Appeals of Correctionation for different inspectors. So we've been able to set two, two tiers of, of inspectors. You don't, you can have one inspector that can do, let's say, residential, things that are not threshold buildings and then above threshold buildings, which will give us a larger pool to actually work with and still, but at the same time not reduce safety.
Yeah, because the current model just doesn't work, you, you can't be staffed with a structural PE that could do a high-rise and spends eighty percent of their day reviewing interior remodels, additions, single-family homes, which is really what the bulk of our work is, eighty percent of our permits by volume is that, not by revenue, but by volume. So it's changing it so that you have two classifications, which just makes sense from a business perspective, that you have, oh, a stable structural who could absolutely do the eighty percent of that work without compromising safety. And then you have a second tier, which is a structural PE that will do your high-rise or your threshold buildings or, and it just makes sense, we feel very good about the, the, um, the changes to the chapter eight of the Miami-Dade County, we were a big part of it, uh, the county was fantastic in bringing us and a lot of the other building officials in, so we're really happy to see that move forward and I think it is, uh, Commissioner Regalado is putting that in March.
Basically, Mayor, it's a two-tiered system, uh, one, one can, uh, one, one group of inspectors and interviewers can do up to threshold and then, and then above threshold, which means that a lot of our work is, is really below threshold, the threshold level, which means over three stories and, and, and so forth, uh, this will really, uh, help in recruiting people in addition to that, no impact on life safety, so, which is very important.
So, in closing, unless you have anything else you'd like to add in regards to what we're doing? You can have whatever you like, please.
I know, it's just, I mean, the staff, I, I pushed them really, really hard and, um, you know, I just want to thank them because I know that I could be really, really tough, but, uh, we have a fantastic group and I'm really, really happy with the group we have, we've cleaned house and, um, everybody that we have right now is essential to the performance of the entire department.
Yeah, so with that being said, for the residents that are listening, the business owners that are listening, remember, when you read a blog that the person who owns a blog is running for public office, they have to make noise in an effort to build a case for why you should pick them. When you deal with facts, as I put the facts in front of you in regards to actual numbers for permits that have been addressed, when you see what we've done in regards to code enforcement, the technology we brought in, the new building, the facts are the facts, let's deal in numbers, let's deal with what we're actually doing to make the situation better. Especially in this economy that we're, that we're dealing with right now, where it's very difficult to find qualified people, especially in very specialized areas, for example, structural reviewer, where it's almost impossible to find somebody.
And by the way, we have three consultants.
We have three consultants.
Structural plan review.
Three consultants keeping, you know, making up for the fact that we don't have somebody, we have one person, but I think we're missing, we used to have three, right?
We have always been budgeted for three, most of our life we have worked with two.
Yep, so my point is that if you have a question in regards to permitting, the manager will tell you, Surami will tell you, Doug will tell you, staff will tell you, you can always come and see me on a Friday at two o'clock, or you can make an appointment to see me, or we can get a coffee at Bouchure, you can probably find me three, four times a week and we can address your permit issue. Surami is always available, you can track your permits online, there's constant movement, there's constant accountability, but please, let's not be overcome with the idea that you can just, you know, take a heavy hand and slap around staff after all the hard work that they've done. If anybody knows on this commission and staff knows, I hold everybody accountable and I don't have a problem addressing issues from this podium. But let's, let's also take a moment to say thank you for your hard work and for your efforts, because this has been an incredible heavy lift to address the thousands of permits, expired permits, the efforts by Remundo and his team to integrate all this technology, to bring in a new website, the manager's leadership on, on many different fronts, your staff's leadership. So I wanted to take this time, take this time to say thank you, thank you to everyone who's been involved in this and as you can see by the facts, not by misdirection, by the actual facts, the permitting process is getting faster and we're accountable more every single day.
I congratulate you all, I mean, um, many years ago in legal industry, we did the transition from paper to electronic and everybody, it was a heavy, heavy, heavy lift to move and digitize everything. And when the judge told you that you were not going to be able to enter paper exhibits in evidence on a large case, it was an extreme lift. So I, I know the hard work you all have done and I just applaud you all for doing it in such an expeditious, uh, timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you very much. Uh, moving on now, we have a time-certain item at ten o'clock, agenda item F1.
Mayor, item F1 is an appeal to the City of Coral Gables City Commission from the decision of the Historic Preservation Board on December twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, for a special certificate of appropriateness application requesting approval for the demolition of the exist, existing residence at the property located at twelve fifty-eight Obispo Avenue, a contributing resource within the Obispo Avenue Historic District legally described as lots one and two, block three, Coral Gables, section E, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book eight, page thirteen of the public records of Miami-Dade County, Florida. Mayor, um, given that this is an appeal, if you will allow me to just give some explanation? This is a quasi-judicial item. Pursuant to section fourteen dash two oh eight point six of the city zoning code, this appeal is based on the record of the hearing before the Historic Preservation Board and shall not be a de novo hearing. What that means is that no new or additional testimony shall be taken. This is an appeal based only on the record, the commission's role is to determine whether the code was followed and whether competent substantial evidence supported the decision of the Historic Preservation Board in denying the request for demolition. After the city commission's review, the city commission has four options as provided in the zoning code. The city commission can affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Board, which in this case denied the certificate of appropriateness requesting demolition. The city commission can affirm the decision of the Historic Preservation Board with conditions. The city commission can override the decision of the Historic Preservation Board, which in this case would mean the certificate of appropriateness is granted and the property can be demolished, or the city commission can remand for further proceedings to the Historic Preservation Board. The mayor, as chair of the city commission, with me as parliamentarian, have issued a procedural order that was provided in advance to the commission and to the parties, you also have a copy, um, before you commissioners. Um, pursuant to that procedural order, the appellant will be allowed fifteen minutes for presentation, which shall be limited to the record before the Historic Preservation Board. Next, the Historic Preservation, um, staff will be allowed fifteen minutes for its presentation, which will also be limited for its presentation, which will also be limited to the record below. Next, there will be time for questions by members of the city commission to staff or the parties. And then public comment will be allowed, but will be limited to two minutes per speaker. Because the review of this appeal is not de novo, public comments shall not be considered testimony in this case. Finally, there will be additional time for questions and discussion by members of the city commission. Because this is a quasi-judicial item, I need to ask if there are any ex parte communications that a member of the city commission needs to disclose.
We receive, or I received at least a handful of emails. I didn't respond to any, but they were just one-way communications for or against. I'm happy to have the city clerk, you know, pull them from my emails.
Yeah, they should be provided to the clerk and put on the record.
Sure.
Similarly, I've received emails. Aside from saying thank you for your email.
Same thing.
There was no other public comment.
Same thing with no response.
Same thing.
Same thing, and I think I also have a letter with regards to the topic that I was, I received in my office today.
So if you could please provide that to the clerk so it could be added to the record?
I think we all received the same letter.
Same letter.
I think we're copied on. I think we're copied. I mean, I have, for example, we got one right here, which was sent to the clerk from Brett Gillis.
Yeah, and there's an email.
It was an email, excuse me.
And if the owner would like to see it, that should be provided, a copy should be provided to the appellant.
I have an extra copy here.
Otherwise, Mayor, we can proceed with the presentations.
Okay.
May I ask who's this letter from? Oh, Historic Preservation, okay.
No, no, he's a, he's a resident in the city. He just wrote us an email.
Good morning, everyone. My wife and I recently, not recently, in September of 2021, we purchased this property on 1258 Obispo Avenue. The previous owner, Igor Nunez, had some preliminary plans, pre-approved for the home, for an addition to be added to the home. And prior to the purchase of the home, I went and I sat with Warren Adams because I wanted to make some, you know, some simple changes to the home regarding colonials, regarding sliding glass doors in the back. And, you know, him and I came to an agreement on all of that. And then we revised the design and that's the design that you guys are going to see today. Unfortunately, during the process, I started seeing certain issues with the home that, you know, I wasn't too sure, you know, if the structural integrity of the home was, you know, was sound. I reached out to Igor, which was the previous owner, and he says, look, the house has some structural problems. And then he later on presents me with a report from an engineer that he had, that said that the house had some issues and I think you guys might have that report as well. I went ahead and then after, and I got my own engineering report. And my engineering report confirmed beyond what his report said that the house had substantial structural issues. And he just was not sure that the issues, that the structural problem that the house had could actually even be repaired. I'm not a structural guy. I do windows. I, you know, that's my specialty. I do a lot of windows here in Coral Gables. But structural, that's not, that's not me. So his name is also Javier. Javier's been in the construction industry for over 30 years, extremely knowledgeable. So I brought him on board. He's actually going to be our GC that's going to be doing the home. And I've asked him to help me see if it truly is possible to repair the existing home. I am going to leave that part up to him.
Good morning. Working off the-
I just want to interject for a moment. Sir, I believe you were not at the Historic Preservation Board meeting. So this, you know, he's, we're allowing the appellant to present. But again, to the extent he goes beyond whatever the record showed at the Historic Preservation Board, it should not be considered because no new evidence is allowed at this stage.
Yeah, my testimony is more towards the practicality because we have a report from the structural engineer as far as, you know, the state of the property. Working off the denial, we did try to take other contractors out there, structural contractors, and see to what degree we could repair the property. Nobody, out of the four contractors that I've taken out there to look at it structurally, nobody's even willing to touch it, much less give me a price. The issue is that the CMU walls are not reinforced from, you know, from the original construction. The state that it's been maintained that has pretty much accelerated any deficiencies in the construction. At this point, it's just not feasible really to reinforce all of the walls, reinforce the slab, everything that the property initially had and the lack of maintenance over time. The water intrusion has pretty much ruined any structural component to the property. Like I was telling Javier, whether the report, the report indicates that there's a lot of damage. It's not indicating whether it can or cannot be replaced. At this point, I've gone out there with various subcontractors, looked at the property over the last, you know, few months. And again, nobody's even willing to touch the house for the work, much less give us a price. So that's what, after the denial, that's what we've been working on.
Okay. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for me?
We may. I think let's hear from everybody and then when we discuss it, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Warren, how are you, sir? Good morning.
Good morning. I believe I need to be sworn in.
No, this is not, there's no new testimony here. It's just a presentation.
Okay. Can I have the PowerPoint presentation, please? The property is located on the southeast corner of Obispo Avenue and Madrid Street. The Historic District was, the Obispo Avenue Historic District was created in 2008. 1258 Obispo Avenue is a contributing structure within the district. The residence was permitted in 1945, was designed by architect William Merriam, and it's undergone minor alterations over the years and retains a high level of historic integrity. This is a 1940s photo of the house. This is the house as it currently exists today. Apart from the roof, there's really not been any substantial changes to the property. And as you can see to the rear of the property, there is a substantial yard which would accommodate a significantly large addition. So a bit about the timeline here on this property. In 2004, a special certificate of appropriateness was approved for a large one-story addition. This was never built. The property was sold. In 2019, a special COA for additions and alterations in site work was approved with conditions. Just after this application was submitted in 2021, the Historic Preservation Board was asked to review a revision to the 2019 approval for removal and replacement of the roof and the floor framing due to the poor condition. In other words, some of the wooden structural elements. The board made a motion to defer and requested that a structural engineer come to the next meeting to explain the condition of the property. Historic Preservation, this work was never carried out and the property was put on the market yet again. So Historic Preservation staff met with the current applicants prior to the purchase of the home in 2021. We explained the previous board approvals and decisions and the structure's contributing status, what that entails, what is a contributing structure, what can and can't you do to it, what would be supported, what would not be supported. At that time, the applicants discussed building an addition and had plans prepared showing a proposed addition, which we assumed would go forward to the Preservation Board. In 2022, the applicants submitted an application for demolition of the existing residence and construction of a brand-new home. The application was denied by the board 9 to 0 on December 21, 2022. Now, as part of the application to demolish the structure, the applicants submitted two structural evaluations in support of the request. Firstly, a report by Felix M. Anton dated July 28, 2020, which was prepared for the prior owner, which was prior to the applicant's purchase of the property. And it provided an analysis of the subfloor wood framing structure and the wood framing structures. It notices decay, water intrusion, termite damage. The damage becomes significant on numerous structural members to the point where integrity and stability and load carrying ability have been compromised, significant water damage, and the subfloor framing structure was not connected to the foundation system. Some repair work had been performed on both structures. The second report, prepared after the applicant purchased the property by Antonia Canelis, states very similar things. In general, the structural cell of the house is in poor condition, water intrusion, termite intrusion, as a result of the termites and water intrusion and aging, the stability and carrying capacity of some of the structural wood elements. This is wooden elements were affected. Some previous wood joist repairs were done. The exterior windows are in poor condition and the exterior CMU walls are not braced at ground level and don't have steel reinforcing. This report then went on to make recommendations. The roofing system and tiles, the sheathing around 50% of the roof wood joists, the ceiling joists must be removed and replaced, recommending termite treatment for the house. The wood floor and subfloor, maybe a significant portion of the wood joists, need to be replaced and recommend bracing the exterior CMU walls to the ground floor wood joists with some connectors. All the exterior windows and doors must be replaced. All perfectly appropriate historic preservation work. The conclusion of this report said, "It is our opinion that the costs of the necessary repair works in this property to restore the structural integrity of the house can be similar to the total cost of a similar new construction." This engineer report clearly states the property can be repaired. Doesn't say it has to be torn down, doesn't say it's a dangerous structure. We also have to bear in mind, so from that, we have, we met with the applicant prior to purchase of the property and one of the engineer's reports, or the most recent report, clearly states the property can be repaired. Also to be considered by the board is section 8-107D of the code. In addition to all other provisions of this article, the board shall consider the following criteria in evaluating applications for demolition. So number one, in addition to all other provisions of this article, number one, the degree to which the building's structure improvement or site contributes to the historic and architectural significance of the district. The building is a contributing resource within the historic district. Its removal would irreversibly and negatively impact the historic and architectural significance of the district. The second one, whether the building's structure or improvement or site of what is one of the last remaining examples of its kind. This building is not one of the last remaining examples of its kind, but every property is unique.
So can I ask you, may I ask you a quick question? So you said every property is unique. What would you say makes this property, again, I'm not a person who is, I think Mr. Gillis referred to himself as a historian, as a preservationist. What makes, let me just give you, just so I can give some more credence to my statement and to my question. So when La Salle Cleaners was being discussed for preservation, I voted in favor of preserving it. I wanted it to be preserved. The building was demolished, which I wish we wouldn't have demolished that building. I wish we would have bought that building, one form or another. We tried, but obviously at that point, we had too many, too many projects going on and we couldn't afford to buy it at that point. That project was supposedly, from my understanding, was changed over time so extensively and it had a lot of damage to it. That staff, I think, said it's not worth saving at that point. That property had a real significant history. That was tapped in with George Merrick and I can't remember which actual architect was responsible for the design of that, of that structure. But when you look at a building like this and you said the word "unique", so what makes this property unique? So I can be educated and understand what is so unique about this property.
You have to remember that there are two, there are three ways to actually designate a property. Number one is individually designated. It must meet one of several criteria.
Property individually designated?
This property is not individually designated.
So is this, but can I just say one thing, Mayor? Again, a lot of misinformation that's been going out, saying this property is individually designated. It's not individually designated. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure because I've gotten a lot of emails.
Yeah.
And people, you know, and people say it and then they talk about it and the ball spreads very quickly. So it's not individually designated, okay?
This property is a contributing structure within a historic district. It's treated exactly the same way as an individually designated historic building. The concern over the loss of contributing structures within historic districts is over time. If this continues to happen, the district then starts losing its architectural and historic character. The street scape starts changing. And ultimately, what makes that district significant is gradually eroded away, which is why the contributing structures in historic districts are the ones that most certainly should be preserved.
How many homes in this district?
Mayor, if I can interrupt, we did have a procedural order that provided for questions after the presentation. I don't know if you want to go back to that order?
I mean, I don't-
Just to keep the sequence?
You know, as a matter of fact, I'm not going to do that.
PowerPoint?
I'm going to ask, I'd like to have my question answered, which is what makes this property unique? Because that word was used and it caught me. What makes this property unique and stand out?
A property doesn't have to be unique to be significant. This particular property contributes to the character of the historic district. The period of significance in the district is 1921 to 1958, which doesn't mean to say every structure built within that period would be classed as contributing. Properties could have been significantly altered within that time, in which case those properties would not be contributing, they would be non-contributing. This district has seemed to encompass Merrick's early formulation of real estate design and planning of Coral Gables, the Florida land boom and the post-World War II housing boom. The particular design is a minimal traditional type house. These are plainer than the Mediterranean revival-style homes. These were built in response to the Housing Act of 1934. They were intended to encourage homeownership, make mortgages more accessible and affordable, and reduce the foreclosure rates. So this is a specific tile of, a specific style of architecture within a specific period of time, within a specific neighborhood, which is unaltered. And the bottom line is that this district was designated in 2008 after an extensive survey by an outside team. And those results were taken to the Historic Preservation Board for reviewing, for final approval. So this is determined to be a contributing structure within that neighborhood. So these are the criteria again that the board must consider. Whether the, number three, whether the loss of the building would adversely affect the historic and/or architectural integrity of the historic site or district. Whether the loss of the building would adversely affect the historic and architectural integrity because it would be one less contributing structure and if the site is redeveloped, one more non-contributing structure. Number four, whether retention of the building would promote the general welfare of the city by providing an opportunity for study of local history, architecture, or design, and an understanding of the importance and value of a particular culture and heritage. As the building retains its integrity, it does provide an opportunity for study of history and architecture. It has not been significantly altered apart from the roof. So therefore, you can tell the design intent of that property because of the few alterations. Number five, whether architectural plans have been presented to the board for the reuse of the property. Anytime someone wishes to demolish a building, will like to see the plans of what is the applicant is proposing to put there. So the applicant did provide plans for the reuse of the property. The board did not review them. The applicant was purely there to apply for the demolition, but he had the plans just to show, look, I have met that criteria. Number six, whether the building poses an imminent threat to the public health or safety. The building does not. It has not been determined to be an unsafe structure. If this were determined to be an unsafe structure, we may be going down the road of demolition by neglect. In other words, leave a building to decay, don't maintain it. Then you're leaving yourself open to the possibility of the city pursuing demolition by neglect. Number seven, whether the applicant has demonstrated retention of the building would create an unreasonable or undue economic hardship as per section 8- would create an unreasonable or undue economic hardship as per section eight dash one one five of the code. The applicant submitted none of the required documentation. Therefore, a request of economic hardship was not submitted and was not considered. Number eight, whether there's a compelling public interest requiring the demolition. There's no compelling public interest, as the demolition would negatively impact a historic district. There are many other residents in that district who wish their district's character and integrity to be retained, and the Canellis report indicates that repairs are possible. So in conclusion, the house is a contributing resource within the Obispo Avenue Historic District. The application is not consistent with the Secretary of the Interior's standards for rehabilitation, as the demolition will result in a negative, and most importantly, irreversible impact to the district due to the loss of a contributing resource. Staff met with the applicants prior to the purchase of the property to explain its contributing status, what this entails, and the outcomes of the previous applications. You know, there are a lot of properties for sale in Coral Gables. Buy a vacant lot, don't buy in a historic district, or buy a non-contributing building in a historic district. But what we are seeing is you can't really be advised of the process to go ahead and buy a contributing building and then come in to try and tear it down. It is not what the city wants to encourage, or certainly staff. The application submitted two structural reports in support of the request. The Anton Report was prepared prior to the applicant's purchase of the property and indicated structural issues with the roof and floor systems, the wood elements which can be replaced. The Canellis Report indicates similar issues, but also indicates that the property can be repaired. And finally, out of the eight criteria that I mentioned there that the board must consider in reviewing a demolition, the request meets only two of the eight criteria in that section of the city code. The recommendation from staff was for denial. The final decision of the board, nine to zero, was for denial, and it was based on the information that's just been presented to you.
Madam City Attorney?
Mayor, so just I want to emphasize that, remind all of you that your review and your ultimate determination today should be based on the record below, and your role is to determine whether the Historic Preservation Board bases decision on competent substantial evidence. So I think the next step in our order would be, you know, questions by you all to either staff or the party.
So I have a quick question. Warren, can you educate me on the architect that designed this property?
William Merriam was known for designing the sort of minimal traditional transitional style of homes roundabout that particular time. We actually have one of his designations coming up at the Historic Preservation Board meeting. And again, what I would see is not necessarily every William Merriam house is eligible for historic designation on an individual level.
Excuse me, I think he's got the wrong architect. The architect is Earl Wolf.
I don't believe it is. Where did you receive that?
So I don't think this was discussed at the Historic Preservation Board, and in any event, what was before the board, and what is, we're deciding today is whether this contributing structure, which has already been determined to be a contributing structure, you're not deciding whether it's a contributing structure. You're deciding whether the board had competent substantial evidence to deny the request for demolition of contributing structure.
But was the evidence in front of the board, the correct architect or not? That's a fair factual question about the proceeding below.
We believe the information presented.
Say again, I'm sorry?
The information presented to the board was correct.
Which was, who was the architect? Because I just heard competing facts. This may be irrelevant, but I think it's an important question to at least know the answer to.
I think actually what's relevant, and I would need to double check that, I think what's relevant is
The reason why, the reason why it's an important question to me at least, because my next question is going to be, how many homes are designated by this architect in the city?
Again, you're speaking about individually designated homes. We're talking about a historic district.
I understand, but it's just a question that I have, I'd like to understand.
I don't have that number at the moment.
So we don't have, we don't have the, we don't have a decisive answer in regards to who the architect is? And you don't have an answer in regards to whether this architect has other homes that have been designated in the city?
He does.
He does? So can you tell me how many?
No.
Is that relevant to this?
To whether it's a contributing structure?
You're not deciding whether it's a contributing structure. That determination has already been made. You're deciding whether
But if it was, but if, I'm asking a question, if it's a factor in determining if it's a contributing structure? Because hypothetically, and I'm not saying this is so, if the basis of that determination was the wrong architect, and the architect is part of the factor you would consider, that's an important factual issue.
So the time for that decision, for any appeal decision, has long run? Again, the determination that it was a contributing structure was made, and, you know, I don't know what year, Warren, but when was the historic district designated?
Two thousand and eight.
And that's when it was determined that this was a contributing structure. So that question is not before you, whether it's a contributing structure?
That was determined, and we have to look at this as how it contributes to a district as opposed to how
But I'm going to ask the question again, and please, it's a very simple question. And I'm not asking for a legal opinion. I'm asking for an answer to this question. Is the architect of a given home in a historic district a factor that would be considered to determine that that structure is a contributing structure to the historic district? Yes or no? I need to understand that.
There's more than one factor.
Is it one of them?
Architect can be, but it is not necessary because it's also determined by architectural style, how much the property's been altered, and therefore, there are many homes in that district designed by many different architects.
If I'm hearing you correctly, then please correct me if I'm wrong. It is a factor, but it's not the only factor. There are other countervailing factors.
There are other factors, yeah.
Okay, just, and then I I would, I'm having a hard time sitting here with a question of not knowing who the architect of this house is right now, and that's a little bit, kind of. Whether or not it's relevant, and we can consider it.
It's actually just been confirmed by my office that the architect is William Merriam, as included in this report.
Okay.
But that's, this is the report that we were sent by
But was that presented below or not?
This is what was presented to us by his office, to us, the report. And that report states that the architect designed by Earl V. Wolf, permitted in nineteen fifty, permit number nine zero two zero.
You're looking at a two thousand and nineteen report. You're not looking at my report. My report's dated twenty twenty-two.
But wait one second, though. It's still a report that is based on, that was on City Letterhead.
No, that's a certificate of appropriateness application. It's not the designation.
But I'm asking, where did you get that document? Is it on City Letterhead?
Yes, it's
But it is on City Letterhead. Can you show it to the attorney, please?
That's a two thousand and nineteen COA application not prepared by me.
That's perfectly fine. I'm not saying it was prepared by you, sir. That's not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that it is on City Letterhead, so it bears, it bears review by our city attorney to ensure that we're following all the proper steps and that everything is being considered. We're about to render, we're about to render a decision here, or potentially not render a decision that has consequences on both sides. I want to make sure I make the most appropriate decision, and I have all the information to make that decision.
It's not part of the designation in two thousand and eight, and it's not part of my report prepared in twenty twenty-two.
Let me ask you a quick question in regards to the designation in two thousand and eight. So when you designated, when you designated the district, the district was designated in two thousand and eight, correct?
Yes.
Did it designate every home over fifty years, or was it a home by home by home process?
Every home within the district is classed as being within the district. There are contributing buildings and non-contributing buildings, so there's a mixture of both. The review and the process involves a survey of every individual home that is ultimately included in the district.
But I think his question is, how did you determine which ones were contributing, I guess is the question, right?
Contributing buildings are built within the period of significance, nineteen twenty-one to nineteen fifty-eight.
So any homes in the district in that time period were deemed contributing?
Not every one of them, no. They must retain their integrity. They can't be too old.
I have a related question.
Oh, wait, wait, let me, Commissioner, just one last thing. So every home was deemed contributing, except, let me finish, sir. One second, please. If it was altered in a way that, again, you know, took away from its cachet or its ability to be designated. But that means that it was a very, it was a, how many homes were not designated? That's the better question.
I don't have, generally for historic districts, the majority of them must be contributing.
That was back to my question, how many homes are in, is this a geographic?
It's on, it's on Obispo Avenue, yes.
And how many, how many homes were in this district?
I didn't include that information in my
Commissioner?
I have, could you go back to your presentation where you talked about the district itself? Because my understanding in the description of why it was created had to do with, I think you said grants, funding. It almost sounded like post-Great Depression, going into World War II. That district had homes that were more affordable to the general public. Can you So I want to focus on that aspect of why it's a historic district. It may not be specifically because of the design or the architect, but because technically, it was a period of trying to kickstart the economy through real estate and create more affordable homes than we were used to, the beautiful Spanish mansions that we have. So let's focus on that. Why is it historic? Is it architectural, or because it was part of a vision or a plan to create more affordable housing?
There are three periods within the district, there's homes from the nineteen twenties, which exhibit Merrick's early formulation of the city as a whole. They exhibit properties from the Florida land boom period, and they also show post-World War II properties from the housing boom. And as you see with houses over those periods, they go from very ornate Mediterranean-style revival designs to more affordable, maybe smaller, less ornamentation, less detailing, a lot more functional. And that is what this particular house shows. It falls within that.
Affordable category as opposed to the architectural design of the Mediterranean style. It falls into that, I guess, third category.
Yeah, plainer, more affordable, more functional.
It was affordable at the time. That's why it gets categorized. Okay.
But there's no way of knowing this particular house on what criteria it was included, whether it was the architect, whether it was the time period. It was, but the fact is, it was included in two thousand and eight as part of that district.
Yes.
Okay, was that before the Historic Designation Board on this application?
Sorry?
Was that information in front of the Historic Preservation Board for this application?
Yes, but what I showed you has pretty much just been taken from the Preservation Board report, because we can't introduce any new evidence. So everything that has been presented to you was presented to the Preservation Board.
And the name of the architect was presented to the
Yes, it's in, it's in my report, yeah.
I had a couple of sort of questions on a different aspect of this. The, you had in the opinion, you, I wrote down, the cost to restore is similar to new construction. That was one of the conclusions.
That was one of the engineers.
When you say that, how big is the house?
The house right now, I think, is like thirteen hundred square feet.
Okay. When you, is the proposed new construction, I assume, is larger than that?
Yes.
Okay. Are you saying per square foot, the cost is the same? Because that's a very big statement, right?
That was an engineer's opinion. That was not
I understand that, but I need, you know, I need to understand, it's an opinion from the underlying proceeding that I need to understand. When, I can't imagine that the cost of a new thirteen hundred square foot house would be more than the cost to restore the existing, based on what I'm hearing about the current status and condition of the property, the framing. I have a related question, which is, can because I dealt with this recently, we have a bit of an insurance crisis in the state people may be aware of. Like, can you even insure a house?
No.
In this?
Can't. Can't. You have to, you have to pay for this house cash. You have to pay for this house cash. Because I was in this situation when I bought my house. I had to buy it cash, because my home was abandoned for five years before it was a foreclosure. And it had leaks, and it was compromised on multiple different fronts. What you're saying, being in the construction industry, as the manager will tell you, this home, to build a new home, is not cheaper than to remodel this home and to fix this home.
A thirteen hundred to thirteen hundred?
It's just wrong. It's wrong. It's wrong. It's like telling me that I don't know what's going on at U M. I know what's going on at U M. It's like telling me I don't know what's going on in the permitting department. I know what's going on in the permitting department. To fix this house is going to cost you at least one point five more than it would cost you than to build a new house.
None of that is a criteria for reviewing a COA.
You made a statement that
No, no, it was part of the opinion. It was on one of your slides.
An opinion from an engineer, not from me.
But you use it as
You read it, you read it to me. So I'm assuming it's relevant.
The applicant submitted it as part of their application, and, you know
But my question is simple, Warren. I need to understand this. The, I do understand that the cost of building a three thousand or four thousand square foot home would be more than repairing a thirteen hundred square foot home, but that's apples and oranges. So I'm trying to understand, you know, that's why I'm trying to understand that statement, because it's a, it struck me in your presentation when I saw it, and that's why I wrote it down. I find it just hard to believe, and, you know, I think the mayor seems to agree that restoration would be if you do apples to apples on thirteen hundred square feet, that the restoration wouldn't be more than new construction. But you don't have an opinion on that, I guess, because you're saying that was the engineer?
No, I mean, the engineer submits his professional opinion, and I'm not an engineer.
I'll give you an example, really quick, just so you know. Mr. Manager, how much did we spend on restoring the Fink Building?
Over two million dollars.
Give you an idea how expensive that building was to restore. And that was a year and a half ago, right?
Mayor, we did it just before the
Okay, so can I reasonably say with your guidance that it would be fifty percent more today?
That's what we're, those are the prices that we're getting today.
So three million to restore that little building, which by the way, I brought that historic building to the city when I found out it was for sale under Cathy, and we bought that property. So I don't want to hear later that you know, it's, the numbers, the numbers are stratospheric for especially historic preservation. When you talk about fixing a building to a certain standard, it's, the manager can tell you. So I don't know, I read things like that.
Fink Building is a nineteen twenty-some odd era building as opposed to nineteen forty-five. You're dealing with Lath as opposed to block, you know.
Center block, isn't it?
Yeah, a different, a different construction.
The other thing is that the owner went through the process of actually trying to restore and do the addition. Nobody goes through that process with any intention of demolishing it from the beginning. They were made aware of the state of the property. They did go through the process of trying to, you know, get pricing to rehabilitate it and go through all that. It's just not feasible at this point. It's not that their intention was to demolish it from the moment they bought the house.
I wanted to say one more thing. When he mentioned that we met, and we did meet, but and I think you can confirm that, because we confirmed it in the initial Historic Preservation meeting. When you and I first met, the first one or two times, we never, in no point in time, ever discussed demolishing the house.
No, you didn't.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't even, I wasn't even considering it. I wanted to just build and remodel and get everything going. It was later that we found all the issues.
Yeah, I was going to say, so I'm told it was disclosed to you, the current, you know, status. Now, I understand what you're saying, and I want to try to make it clear. I think what you're saying is that after that, additional problems were discovered. So while you were on notice, which is important, it's a very important factor in this proceeding. I think anybody would acknowledge that. Because they did tell you that there were these issues. You're telling me that there were additional things discovered after the fact?
Correct. So the initial meetings with Warren were no discussions whatsoever about demolishing the property. In my understanding, everything was repairable. It was later that we started seeing all these things, you know, I have, I started seeing that the exterior part of the house, the front wall is exploding outward, and I'm saying, why is this happening? Again, I'm not structural. I do windows. So when I start getting, you know, doing some investigation, the walls are hollow. There's, they were saying about it not being braced, so it's, I don't know the technical aspects, but there's other issues that came about that. I'm like, okay, well, this is now to another level. That's when I got the engineering report. That's when I brought Javi on board, and that's where, how we've gotten to this point. But there was never any discussion with Warren and I about demolishing the property. That was not my intention.
By the way, and I'm sorry, in your presentation, there was a point where the board was brought, the attention was the attention was focused on the structural problems and issues, and it said deferred. They said the board deferred when that, the structural.
That was a prior certificate of appropriateness.
So what happened with after the deferred?
Yes.
Because they deferred it for some reason.
In 2019, or 2020, after approval was given for an addition to the prior owner, the prior owner come back and said, I need to remove the floor joists, I'd like to lower the floor, and I need to take the roof off, but we'll rebuild the roof the same way it was. Before the board were willing to give permission for that, they said, bring your engineer with you. But again, these are focusing very much on the wood elements of the building, and the engineer's report states this building can be repaired. And on top of that, the code specifically states, all eight of the criteria that I read, read out, they must be met for the board to approve demolition, and the application only met two. That's in the code.
If he, the gentleman would never have purchased that property and the property would have sat there with all the issues that it seems to have, obviously. You know, we could have a situation if it's in that dire states, and it seems like it, like, we lost the Gondola Building, and so what would the city have done if it would have stayed in the same hands and the building is falling apart?
Ultimately, there would be an option to pursue the owner for demolition by neglect, which is effectively deliberately allowing a historic building to, to start falling into decay. Obviously, when we see new owners and new proposals and new plans, the hope is that these plans will be followed through, so there'll be no need for that because the building will be restored and altered if, if needed. So, that has not, that, that has not happened yet in this particular case.
I have a few questions. This house has a lengthy timeline, and has anything been done in interim to help preserve the building? Roof is old, has it been covered in the meantime? I've had old buildings, have jacked the floors, have done things of that nature. You do things to, to preserve structures or prevent the water intrusion to continue, to stop the decay. That's one set of questions, I'm going to let you answer that, and then I have a follow-up on that.
We haven't seen any tar polons on the roof or anything, we haven't received any applications for any sort of interior repairs. So, the assumption is that the building is in, in fairly good condition. Yes, it's an older building, yes, it has been vacant, but according to the engineer's report, yes, it can be repaired.
Right, has, did the, the board consider the actual cost to repair at the time that the application was in front of them?
No, numbers were, the, the only number that was, not even discussed, that was available to the board, was the estimate supplied in the engineer's report that it would cost so much more to restore this building than tear it down and build a new one, but no hard numbers were ever presented, no.
All right, I mean, I, I know it's difficult to find contractors now for anything, so, but the actual cost, if that wasn't in front of the board, City Attorney, is that something that we can consider?
It's not one of the criteria, it's not one of the factors that was considered, and it's not something that's, that should, it's not relevant to the determination.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Assistant City Attorney Gus Abiles, I've had the pleasure of being counsel to Historic Preservation Boards for the better part of a decade now in other cities and in this city for five years, so I kind of have to help provide some counsel to our board. There's a lot of factors that they consider as part of their discussion, but they are very limited as to what they can consider. So, the discussion of why that property was designated or not designated was not before that board. It wasn't a consider, it wasn't a factor that they considered. They only consider the eight criteria, which, whether it can be sought demolition. One of the criterias is what I'm, what's being discussed a lot is the economic hardship. They did not apply for designation under that criteria. If that criteria would have been satisfied, the board would have considered it. The board didn't consider it because it wasn't submitted. It was only a request for a C, a special COA for demolition. I always joke that I'm the one person in that room that doesn't have an opinion, because I don't have an opinion on the properties, whether they're designated, not designated, demolished or not demolished. Everybody else can, but what I do try to do is make sure that the process is preserved. And in this particular instance, before this board, the only thing that's being considered, I'm just kind of beating that dead horse because the city attorney already articulated, is we are limited to the eight criteria as to whether the board had competent substantial evidence for their ruling on those eight criterias. All the other factors would have been great in 2008 when the property was part of a contributing structure to this historic district. Currently, before this board, it's just not up for, for discussion. So, I'm not, I don't know if that helps you to kind of narrow it down, but once again, my only job is to protect the process and the procedure and our city code, and that's, that's really what's before you today. If you have any questions in terms of the legal aspects with the city attorney, I'd be glad to answer anything.
Economic hardship and is different from, I guess, what I'd call a sort of economic, like feasibility, if that makes sense. In other words, there's a point where these people are not going to spend some absurd amount of money to do what needs to be done because it's just too much money. Doesn't mean that they have an economic hardship or he doesn't have the wherewithal to do it, it would just be a bad decision probably. So, I know they didn't apply for it, but just to kind of understand, and when the gentleman, the contractor says that it's not feasible, I'm being told there's an engineer's report that says it is technically feasible, but what you're saying is that it's not economically feasible, that it, it can be done, but it's kind of just.
Can I, can I give you an example, Vice Mayor? Can I give you a Vice Mayor, and then I ask the, I ask the manager to please interject. Okay. How many square feet is the Gondola Building?
About eight hundred.
Eight hundred square feet, the Gondola Building, is that block?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That building is going to cost how much?
1.5.
1.5 million square feet. To two million dollars for an eight hundred square foot building that the city is going to restore? I went with my colleagues, not once, but four times to the state, thank God for people like Brian Avila, Demi Carrera, state representative senators who got us that million dollars for that building, but we are spending probably 1.5, if not 2 million, let's go 1.75 million on an eight hundred square foot building that's going to be renovated, which is not laugh, it is block. And it goes to show you the costs associated with restoring a building that a wall collapsed on it, and it was not taken care of, and that is the city's responsibility because it is a historic building that must be taken care of. So, the costs are extraordinary right now. I've dealt with a lot of historic preservation work, I've dealt with it in downtown Miami. It's one of the things, we've done multiple different projects, the costs are significant. And I can give you examples of projects that I've worked on. So, this is an example in our own backyard, that's a very similar construction, that is an eight hundred square foot building, this is an additional six hundred square feet, and we're talking about a building that, that's going to be 1.5 million on the low side, if everything goes perfect, what could be the cost of restoring this building? Two million. It goes to what the Vice Mayor was saying, I think the issue is, I think one of the, one of the concerns here is, hey, we deem it that he must move forward, we deny it, the appeal, right? He now has a building, he now has a building that it's going to cost him two million dollars to renovate, in today's standards with the, with the cost of construction. Hey, you can't go to a bank and get a construction loan that easily right now. Unless this gentleman has two million dollars in cash that he's willing to pay to, because he wants to renovate this property, we have to, I mean, this is one of the, one of the concerns I have, I know, and I want to hear from our attorney on that front.
And it's, and just to, I had that exact same question, and, and the challenge I'm having is, I appreciate the legal parameters of this proceeding.
Yeah.
I appreciate the prior decisions, that things happened in 2008 or nine and, and things didn't happen in 2008, 2009, and I respect that. I also have a resident, and I don't want to engage in academic exercise here that renders a situation that's totally impractical for everybody involved, that is just going to sit there and, and not be resolved ultimately. And so, I'm in a bit of a bind because again.
You know what happened? That happened in my house, in my house, in my neighborhood on Ancona, with the gentleman's property, you're very familiar, until the property collapsed on itself, and it was not a historic home.
I wish the engineer was here, frankly, I, I did look, but, because we're talking, getting into kind of real technical sort of questions about the feasibility here, but anyway, sorry, he asked you a question.
Of course. So, the benefits of the economic hardship request basically says, I have a historic home, I don't deny it's a historic home, it's still a historic home, but we're putting that aside for right now, and we're looking at the economic hardship aspect of that component. So, whether it's feasible, whether it's realistic, if the house is worth a hundred thousand dollars, unless you have somebody who just loves, you know, historic preservation, you're probably not going to be able to find somebody willing to put a million dollars for a house that's going to be worth three hundred at the end of it. So, there's a process for that, but that wasn't done in this particular case, so.
But, but at some point, compounding that problem is, I don't see the wisdom in that.
It goes, it goes back, it goes.
Understood.
One, 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 excuse me, one second. It goes back, and you're very familiar with this, because you helped me with this issue, you helped the resident. Two blocks from me, on Ancona, there was a gentleman, an older gentleman, who was an attorney, was an attorney. His home, we battled with it for how many years? Five, six years, seven years, when Miriam was here. We had multiple meetings, the property collapsed on itself. He was living in the house until one day, our city attorney gave the order for demolition. We gotta demolish this house, we gotta move forward, it's a public safety, it's a nuisance, it's a problem, you're gonna, something's gonna happen. So, people lived in that neighborhood, I dealt with the residents, people lived in that neighborhood, having to, having to deal with a home that partially collapsed, it was the garage that collapsed on itself, actually trapping a car in there that was in there. So, are we gonna, we're talking about a person's ability to pay for the renovations that are required, and what if this just continues like this because they can't afford to pay for the millions of dollars it's going to cost?
What, what are the options? What are the, you mentioned in the beginning we have four options. What are the options we have right now? He did not apply for economic hardship. Can that, can this be sent back to the?
Can we remand it?
Board, remand it and a chance to do that? Can it be, for example, could he be, could he demolish and rebuild exactly like it is right now but new, the same style, everything, as an option? Are those kinds of things possible at this stage?
Could he amend the application to include additional?
I'd like to answer a, a portion of your question, if I may. So, in, 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 in respect to, you know, trying to maintain the same look of the house, I don't, I, I thought you guys would have our original slide that we had for the show, I mean, for the.
Your, your presentation was loaded?
Yes.
I don't know if you needed it pulled up.
If you can pull it up, we actually, I had the architect to, to honor the original house, because I, I mean, I, I wanted to, to do what was best for both sides, and we're actually rebuilding the exact same layout of the existing house.
The drawings I have did not show that, and I, and I would say a couple of other things. We have twelve hundred historic properties in this city, not every one of them was cheap to repair. Not every one of them was in great condition, some in a lot worse condition than this. So, this can be done, it just depends, in, in my opinion, if you actually want to do it or not. The house has not been declared an unsafe structure, the roof isn't caving in, and if it were continued to be left to decay even further, we would go down the road of potential demolition by neglect because it's obviously being done intentionally. So, I think that opening the door to allow anyone who owns a historic home that may need some repairs to just apply to the board for demolition, especially in the current property market, I don't know how many of you are familiar with West Coconut Grove, but that's, that's what happens, and that's what happens when these historic districts are allowed to be significantly.
I have an issue with that point, because I go back to my, one of my earlier questions. Within that district, there are different categories according to our discussion, and I still don't know if this house fell under one, the category that has nothing to do with architectural style, but because it was built at a certain time and place.
No, it's within the period of significance, it's a specific architectural style, it's by a Coral Gables well-known architect, and it is relatively or pretty much unaltered, so it meets all of those four things.
Because back to the issue of building the exact same building, that's what we're doing with the Gondola Building. We're building, I think, the exact same Gondola Building, and there was a community support to do that, and the leadership of the mayor and the commission in Tallahassee and got the funding, and, and we're rebuilding the exact same Gondola Building. And, you know, my, my issue is, I understand just designating districts, historic districts for architecture, the architect, perhaps, you know, somebody important to our history like George Merrick and others live there, and I just want to make sure, I mean, I personally prefer our historic districts focus on that and not other issues which we discussed earlier. There was a boom, there was a need for affordable housing, I understand that, but we're building affordable workforce housing, hopefully more and more in Coral Gables. In sixty years, are we going to designate that historic because we made more workforce housing than we have today? To me, that's an area that's a little problematic, but I, I know Mayor Kason mentioned maybe sending it back to the Board of Architects. At this point, I think.
To the Historic Board.
The Historic, sorry, Historic, the Historic Preservation Board, I think right now it's a, it's a difficult call because there is economically a huge burden on this family, and at the other side, we want to protect and preserve our, you know, historic districts. So, at least personally for me, it's a, it's a.
Commissioner, you, you cannot base your decision on the economic hardship, it was not part, it was not applied for, it was not presented below, it was not considered below, so you cannot base your decision on that.
But can we remand it and ask the lower board to then consider that? Well, I would say.
They would have to apply for it.
I, but I would say that based on the opinion that the cost to restore is similar to new construction, and the fact that no numbers were actually considered to reach that very conclusory opinion is to me a little bit troubling, but.
Well, that would be the engineer that should have got those numbers, that's not, economic hardship was not applied for, it requires a substantial amount of financial information be submitted.
Yeah.
And, you know, that is one person's opinion, maybe another engineer would say, hey, this can be.
It's the, it's the opinion that was, that was submitted, was placed on a slide and put before me today, so I, I gotta deal with that, that's the one I gotta deal with, right? So, that is an issue, look, I think, I think reading between the lines of some of my colleagues' comments and at least the dovetails with what my, my thinking, to me, there's a difference, and maybe there's not really, but between a district with a contributing structure that was identified because it felt very, very broad brush, you know, it fell within a certain amount of years, it hasn't been altered, as opposed to an individualized historically significant structure. And I got to tell you, when I look at the house itself, all due respect to the buyer, it's not something that stands out to me as architecturally significant, and.
The report was, the report was completed and researched by a well-established professional company, according to the conditions in the city code.
Yes, and I, and a lot of, and by the way, I think, if I'm honest with you, I think a lot of the issues being articulated here are fundamentally problems with the city code. Just to be clear, I think, like, this process is less than ideal, but that's not what's before us today.
Yeah.
So, moving on, I think we've discussed this, what would, what would be the next steps?
I'm just wondering, if it, if we remand it back to the board, with them to discuss the possibility of rebuilding the exact building, look exactly the same, anybody that drove by would not, not know if it was the old one or the new one, rebuild exactly the same thing, in the same place.
Presumably with an addition.
Not even talking about economic hardship, but just rebuild the building new, just like that, what he said he would do, does that solve the problem?
Could I, could I see the, could I see the rendering that you said in the presentation that you have here?
And while, while that's being pulled up, any plan to, to rebuild or, or remodel or make any changes has to come before the Historic Preservation Board anyway, or separate certificate of appropriateness.
But that, but at some point in time, there was an addition deemed appropriate, right?
Two prior additions were approved, yeah.
Right. So, it's not, the issue here is not so much the, the potentiality of an addition.
No.
As it is the demolition of the existing.
The demolition of the existing, yeah. We're fine with a, with an addition, and I would say the proposed plans that were submitted didn't actually have the home entrance on Obispo, they actually had them on, so that the entire house was being turned ninety degrees.
You have no issues with that? Or you do have?
We, we would have an issue with that, and we have an issue with demolition of the existing building.
That's not, that's not my question, though.
Anything else would need to be reviewed by staff and, and taken to the board, but.
Everything, everything needs to be reviewed by staff, I completely understand that.
Preferably, my professional opinion, the house should face the same way as it was originally built.
Right, and do we have in the record the prior plans that were submitted and approved?
They, they're all in the, in the office, yes.
No, on this record that we're looking at right now?
No, that wasn't under consideration by the, by the board, it was pure. It was purely the demolition.
So to the, to the applicant, are you willing to have the commission render a decision today? Or do, would you like to have this remanded back to the
I rather that, I wanna end it here. I'd rather you guys make a decision. I don't, I can't keep, I've been dealing with this for too long. I'm carrying the cost of a house. Construction cost keeps going up. I, I, I need to, you know, interest rates have gone to the roof. So now doing a construction loan is gonna cost a lot more. I, I just need to, I need to get this to an end already.
I, I'll be honest with you. I, I don't see a way on the existing record to do anything but affirm the decision of the board. But, um, I would consider, depending on the answer to Commissioner Kason's question, which I'm not sure has been totally clarified, to consider the possibility of a remand and exploring the possibility, because I'm, I'm interested in results. And I wanna reach the best result that not only preserves the integrity, but also doesn't
So Mr. Mano
cause you significant economic damage.
We have, we have tried. We, you know, Javi has brought multiple contractors that specialize in shell work and that kind of stuff. I can't even get a price.
We're not talking
No, 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 yeah.
We're not talking about historic We're talking about knocking it down and building it the way it was. Within addition, within addition.
So what we're, what I am, what I am proposing is, is that the existing, the layout of the home, the way that the house is laid out
But that respectfully, the rendering doesn't look anything like the existing structure.
Oh, no, one, one hundred, no, no, one hundred percent.
So what we're talking about, maybe, maybe is to remand it, have staff and the board look at what Commissioner Kason said, which is, is there a way to demolish and rebuild pretty much exact with an addition similar to what was previously approved?
Yes, if I, if I may. Um, so the only issue is that for this board to remand back to Historic Preservation, you need to find that there was an error by the Historic Preservation Board that they failed to meet all eight criteria, common substantial evidence, for them to reconsider it and that the error was not considering a factor that was never presented before. That's problematic. So what maybe the next step would be, if this board was to affirm, would be the applicant has the opportunity to submit a new request for a special certificate of appropriateness with a new addition or a new renovation of the property that is significantly different than the, the current proposal. And they can go through the process that route.
Is there a time limit on him to do that? Is there like
If it's significantly different, obviously, as you just stated, the property that's being proposed is not in any way complimentary or looks like the existing. So if the proposal or suggestion that you were all thinking of would be something that's more historically oriented, um, it's gonna be significantly different than the current proposal. So they would basically be just submitting for a new
I think
special certificate of appropriateness.
My, my view is that that's the path. And I would say to you that I can't tell you whether you should go through that process again. I, I really feel badly that you're in this situation. I don't like this process, but it is the process. And my job is to sit here and apply the rules and uphold them. So given where we are, um, I would say to affirm the decision. But I would tell you that if you do go down that process, I would, under the right criteria, you know, be open to that possibility of
So let's say I, we take that, so
And the board may disagree with me, by the way. The board, it's gonna go through staff, it's gonna go to the board. Warren may, it sounds like he's gonna say he disagrees. And that's okay. I'm not here to tell Warren what his opinion should be. I wanna hear his professional opinion and I wanna hear the board's opinion. I'm just telling you, if it were, if it were here on a record that had the economic portion involved, that explained the feasibility of that, that had a rendering that was nearly identical to the existing structure, I would be more supportive and I would be in a position to be supportive. But right now, I'm not.
The, the, the existing, what I'm talking, the house is never, the rendering that you're seeing up there is not, it never, never gonna look like the house that's there right now. I am only re, re-putting up the existing house with the addition. So if you look at it bird's eye view, the layout of
And get you there is what we're saying.
Right, right. Now, I mean, we're limited in the four corners
I just don't know what I'm gonna be able to advance. I don't know how I'm gonna, they, they're, they're telling me that I can't, I can't even get a price to repair the existing home. And then I'm gonna go through the demo process and then he wants me to put the door on the same side of the house. That, that, that doesn't, that's not what looks good. It looks good on the other side. He doesn't wanna approve that. So like, they're not trying to
But you're now, you're now respectfully, you're talking apples and oranges. Because now we go back to the conversation that you had before you bought the house. And you knew the door had to be on that side. And you weren't changing the address to the other street. And I totally, I would rather have the new house that you're showing me on the rendering as well if I were you. I get it. I, I really do. But we can't with a decision that was made in two thousand and eight before any of us were here, designating this thing as a contributing structure. We can't go back in and do that. Um, so we're trying to find a path for you that works. And I'm not saying this path works, but what you're describing of, well, putting the, like, you, you knew that the door was where it is. You knew that the address was front, that the house was fronting that street. What you're now saying is a totally different thing, that you just wanna do something different. And that's a different problem.
That, that's fine. But I, let's say I go to him and, and, and I present, you send it back and I go with them and we still don't come to an agreement. Do I come back here again?
Yes.
Right, right. And you know, the, the problem you have to understand is we have to follow the law. So we're, we're handcuffed. I can't amend your application for you on the dais here. They have to, we are limited to the record that was presented in front of us and the criteria that was presented in front of us. And within those four corners, I cannot identify something that our board missed and failed to consider as far as a basis in your application to say, you overlooked this? Please look at it again. So
So, piggyback, if I, can we get some public comment or let's, Commissioner?
Just real quick, I wanna piggyback on what Commissioner Anderson said. On a broader, uh, view of our decisions in quasi judicial types of situations and, and like today, you know, we're not necessarily bound, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam City Attorney, we're not directly bound to follow the decision of, let's say, the Historic Preservation Board. But in my opinion, when their vote is so overwhelmingly on one side or the other, that weighs heavily in my decisions because I consider them experts in that field. Uh, we do have wiggle room, I think, to obviously find solutions. But I think, uh, it, it, it's a guiding light in terms of how to perceive. But we're trying very hard to find a fair solution. But like my colleague says, because we have to base our decision on the record because the historic designation, historic district was created before we were here. Sort of our hands are tied in terms of finding fair solutions, but, um, you know, but we're doing our best.
Okay, can we have some public comment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, so far we only have one speaker. It's Ms. Maria Cruz.
Let us remember, just please stay on topic. It will be, it will be two minutes.
Uh, Mayor, if I just may respond to Commissioner Mano and just to reiterate that what you're doing is, your review is reviewing the decision below based on the record and making a determination whether there was competent substantial evidence to support that decision.
Right. But we don't necessarily are
You don't have to follow it exactly.
Sometimes in the community think, well, if the board voted this way, we have to do exactly, you know, like, we are free to make a decision based on the record. We're not bound by that decision.
Correct. You don't have to, their decision isn't binding on you. You're reviewing it to make sure that it was based on the competent substantial evidence.
Maria Cruz, fourteen forty-seven Miller Road. I have no horse in the race other than the, what I just saw is not even close. I think Commissioner Kason hit it right on the spot. If he was requesting to build something the same as is there with all the green area around it, I could buy that. But you know, it's not. That new proposal will be a sore thumb in that area. It's a completely new, new building, new look, new everything. It has nothing to do with that district. That's a problem. The issue with the money should not be an issue because there's money to build a new house. So the issue is they do not wanna spend their money on the new. The money that they were gonna spend, they don't wanna spend it on re, whatever the word is, this old house, but they have the money for the new house. So money should not be a consideration. And this is really the fact that since they got it, they haven't done anything to protect it weighs a lot. Because if you were intending to remodel it or fix it or whatever, then you would have protected so the damage was less. But we have allowed it to be so bad that now our hands are tied. We can't fix it. Well, there are other areas, I believe there was a house in Coconut Grove that they had to put back the way it was, exactly where it was, because they allowed it to go bad by choice. Thank you.
So to correct the record, because I think it's important, um, if this house was to re-rebuild and then you would build an addition, the cost would be, would be kind of in line. But if you're required to renovate this house to its historic integrity, the numbers would be significantly higher along with the fact that then you would add an addition, which would also add cost to it. But again, I think you have to be very careful when we talk about these kind of numbers so we can talk about the real numbers and not just say that, you know, they're gonna build a new house, so at the end of the day, they can just do what they please.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more speaker on soon. It's Ms. Carelli Carbonell.
And I would like to, uh, close the speakers, please.
Yes, sir.
And
If I may, just for purposes of just the record, um, so although we've discussed the new property, the property itself, even if demolished today, is still in a historic district. So it would have to go through approval as a structure inside of the district. So this, so this commission cannot approve that house today regardless of
Of course.
Just so that everybody's aware.
Got it yet? Uh, good afternoon, good morning. Two minutes, please.
Yes, hi. Uh, good morning, everyone. And I have to say that I am pleased to hear all your discussion. And I think, um, I, I hear that there's a consensus as to how important a historic district is, whether it's a contributing property or not, well, as a contributing property. And I quickly just wanna read what the protection is for a, um, historic district uh, on the local level. And it says, under the National Historic Preservation Act, local historic district designation offers by far, so this is local, okay? Local historic district designation offers by far the most legal protection for historic property because most land use decisions are made at the local level. So with that said, um, I understand you did receive the letter from the Historic Preservation Association. Um, but I do want to, on behalf of the organization and its members, to support the Historic Preservation Board's nine to zero vote to deny that design proposal for the demolition of the existing residence uh, of the property at twelve fifty-eight Obispo Avenue. The city's preservation staff presented a very well documented report detailing the home's historical significance and that the demolition is not consistent with Secretary of the Interior standards of rehabilitation as it will result in a negative and irreversible impact on the Obispo Avenue Historic District. So please affirm the Historic Preservation Board's vote and I thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Are there any other further comments from the applicant or from staff? None? Team? Anyone else?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to affirm the I'll second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
No. Moving on. Thank you very much.
I wanna make a public service comment. I think it's important for folks out there that when you go before certain boards and you work through the, you know, the process of the city, sometimes the process is very technical and very legal. And sometimes I quite honestly, for the bottom of my heart and all fairness and transparency, there are situations that it's helpful to bring someone onto your team with the expertise of what to file and how to file. Because once you get past that point, sometimes it's a point of no return. And it's best to have an expert on your, on your side to help you navigate those waters.
And I would add that. I really think at some point, again, if there's ever a charter review or something, we really need to revisit this process to me.
This is in the zoning code.
Yeah, to, or find in the zoning code. But I don't like having residents in that position. I think it's honestly, I don't see, I don't, I see, I see such little historic, like, when you see that home and the condition it's in, like
Well, I, I know. It's, it's part of the reason why I, with the chamber, I did a how to avoid getting sued somewhere for small business owners. Because, you know, if you have some guidance, you know how easy it is to fix some things or to put that application in correctly.
But at some point, it's just not, and I, and this was a unique set of facts.
Right.
They had some notice, et cetera. At some point in today's housing market, there is no way that somebody can buy a home that big and spend the kind of money to renovate it and not be, I mean, to say they're upside down on the property is putting it lightly. It just doesn't make any sense.
And that's what I wanted to, that's what I was trying to iterate because someone came up and spoke and said that, he said, money, just throw money. You can't get a bank loan. You can't get a bank
Probably can't even get insurance.
When, when, when their property value isn't there. So you gotta come out of pocket to get this done. That's why I was hoping that we could remand this. I went to speak to my, to, to our attorney. He says you can't remand this. That's why I voted no. Please don't send me emails about historic preservation. I'm the one that pushed for the Fink. I voted for LaSalle. Uh, you know, I got the money with my team members for the gondola building. I'm a big supporter of, of historic preservation. But we have to be honest with ourselves. They bought a, they bought a home, whether they knew about it, they didn't. They tried for a while to get it, to get it, uh, to get some sort of addition built to it. They couldn't come to an agreement with staff. They couldn't come to an agreement with historic preservation. It's perfectly fine. I respect that. But now this home is gonna remain in that, in that, in that same state, like what happened a block away from my house where the house eventually collapsed. And now there's an empty green site there and there's nothing there. And the person
Or he's gonna sell, or he's gonna sell it to somebody who'll put the money in.
Or, you know, if the process is, there's a distinction between a contributing structure, if it can be rebuilt. I mean, if it's a, if it's a Fink building, it's a Fink building.
It's a Fink building.
Okay.
That's why I asked.
It's not, it's not a Fink building. Should the process be on a contributing structure when it's in such a bad state of repair?
Right.
To rebuild Humpty Dumpty, to look exactly like Humpty Dumpty again.
Is that something we could review at some point as a commission? Have a discussion on that type of, and see, perhaps not even have to wait for a charter review, but Madam City Attorney?
The historic preservation regulations are in the zoning code. So it's something that can be reviewed and, and, you know, go through the process if amendments, you know, are
Because my colleagues are right. In today's world, sometimes reality butts heads with something that was written a long time ago. And I think even every aspect of our code, every aspect of our charter, we need to continuously look at to see if it needs to be tweaked to make it fair and make it reasonable and make it something that we can enforce. And I think that's okay when it's an individually significant home. But when it's just part of a district that got pegged contributing because it fell within certain years and this was, you know, we weren't there, we can't undo that unfortunately, but I hope that they
To your point, I hope they come back despite the affirmance of the decision. It's without prejudice with them coming back to do with another petition that works. We'll see.
So I hope that, I also am asking Warren, Mr. Adams, to please give me the information on the architect that was conflicting. It was, I'm not asking for it now. I'm asking for it after. You can send me an email. You can copy my colleagues through the manager. There was conflicting statements. I went again and spoke to the attorney. I said, there was a document that was provided by the city on City Low on Letterhead that had the name of the architect that they're talking about as the architect of that property.
It was a twenty nineteen staff report on their, uh, the prior owner's request for a certificate of appropriateness for an addition, and it had a different architect name. You know, I, I don't know
It wasn't, it didn't come, and I wanna put this on the record before, because, you know, it's gonna come back, that tidal wave that's gonna come now and it's gonna, there's gonna be a blog report and there's gonna be the whole thing. You're talking about people who bought this property. They bought this property and they were given a report from staff on this, with a city seal on it. And it says, the architect is the following person. That's why I asked two very important questions. Number one, who's the architect? I wanted it in writing. It was a very simple question. And number two, has that architect ever been responsible for historically designated property? That's what I wanna see. That's what I want to see, I would like to see that. That's just for me, for my own edification, because I like to make decisions based on the totality of the facts.
Yeah, and is there any procedure, I think your immediate answer is probably gonna be no, but is there any procedure where if you have newly discovered facts, like a decision was rendered that a structure was contributing and partly in reliance on the fact that it was Architect A, and you just discovered it wasn't?
Let me just be clear, though. The information about the, when the district was designated, and this was determined to be a contributing structure, was based on the correct architect name, because it's in the report.
That depends on what the correct architect is.
What is the correct architect? That goes back to what I keep saying, I mean, we could keep going about this all day, and I'm not gonna tell you that I agree with you, so...
If we discover, if we discover, if...
So I would say that we should...
That it was a different architect, can you reopen the decision on it being a contributing structure? Based on a newly discovered fact?
Not, not, not at this late stage, no.
Even though you discovered it now, because we're sitting here today, nobody knows.
We could look into that, but I, you know...
If the designation report is incorrect, the actual district designation report, then it would be corrected. However, I have the correct architect in my report, the correct architect's designation report.
If we could just confirm based on that city...
I can send that in.
I like, I would like a confirmation via email, copy the manager. Very similar situation like Ridgewood, which I don't remember if you were here on the commission at that point when we voted for Ridgewood. I voted for designation, that property was eventually demolished. You know, can't win them all, at the end of the day, it is what it is. So, moving on, I'm gonna be trying to go very brief because we've been here for a while. Mayor's comments, discussion regarding street signs in downtown. This is very simple.
We have an 11 o'clock...
Oh, we do have an 11 time cert, I'm gonna run through this really quickly, okay? Very simple. I missed that, no, take me one second, just one second, I promise I'll be done with this really quick. You know the blade signs that you see? For example, Miracle Mile, Ponce...
The what signs?
The blade signs. The little blade signs that are on the poles?
Okay.
They're in certain streets. I had some pictures here, here you go. See the blade signs? Look at, look at the current condition of the blade signs.
Yeah, and the pole.
And the pole. So, I've asked the city to see if we can maybe do a partnership with a community foundation in the chamber, and we can take these blade signs, and we can auction them off for charity. And we can, you know, maybe somebody lives in that neighborhood, somebody has a business in that neighborhood, they want to buy, they want to hang it up as, as a memento. These are probably really old.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and we can replace them with something a little bit more, you know? Maybe, maybe in the same, maybe in the same vein, if, if historic says that it's appropriate. Maybe in the same line kind of look, but we could do something new and refreshed. These probably haven't been done in, I don't know how many decades.
Nice ideas.
Yeah, something simple, you know, non-intrusive. Look at this, this is currently the status of the one on, on the corner of, of Miracle Mile and Ponce. That's the current status of it.
A little hard to read.
Yeah. So, please, I would like through the manager, please, if we can start addressing this with our, with our public works team, to give me an idea of what the cost is to replace the signs throughout the city, to do something a little bit more professional, and we can potentially do something good for charity if possible.
Since we're replacing a mayor, maybe we can go to, to a better looking sign.
Yeah, yeah. I wanna follow historic protocol, whatever is required. But I want to just, that's number one, thank you.
Thank you.
And then we'll go back now to the 11 o'clock time cert. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does that, do we need, do we have consensus amongst the commission? I need to know that, can...
For the signs, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get a motion on that?
Sure.
Do you want us to bring something back next meeting, Mayor?
I want a motion on it first.
Motion to...
Second.
Second. Mr. Clerk?
Do you have the direction you need, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, it's very simple, I just want the manager to come back, please, and provide me with an example of, different examples of how we can replace those signs throughout the downtown to give it more, you know, breadth of fresh air.
Mayor, Mayor, we would have to get some samples, we would have to get some costs, it will take a little more than, than one...
No problem.
Maybe sometime during March.
We could do it, we could do it in March or April, it's perfectly fine.
On a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect.
We're not here in April, May.
May. Moving, uh, maybe we can do it in March, moving at the end of March, so that we can get the, the vice mayor's engagement. 11 a.m. discussion regarding the cultural development grant program. Sorry about the delay, I apologize. Thank you for your patience.
Problem. Catherine Cather's Arts and Culture Specialist with the city. And then we have the vice chair, Nina Burgos, with the Cultural Development Board. And I believe Board Member Frank Martinez is on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, thank you so much. The board received a request from Mayor Lago through the Chair to delay notice of grant funding until such time that the commission can provide clear guidelines for the staff, the cultural development board, and the applicants of this program. The board discussed and agreed that it was not fair to ask organizations to go through extensive application process before knowing of any major changes to this program. I was nominated to speak on behalf of the board, and I'm requesting direction from the commission to move forward with this year's cultural grant process. But before discussing this important item, I would like to share some key facts about the program. First, the cultural development program was established, the cultural grant program, rather, was established in 1995 for the purpose of promoting cultural events and making recommendations to the city commission on requests for funding of cultural and community organizations. It has always welcomed outside organizations with programming that takes place within the city. Coral Gables, Miami Beach, and Miami Dade County are the only area governments we are aware of with established cultural grant programs. Outside of these, no other municipality in the area has the number of opportunities for the residents to experience the arts. All programs receive, receiving support take place within the city of Coral Gables, and number over 1,200 programs and events, with about 35% of those being free. They represent theater, music, dance, film, the literary arts, gardens, and more. For the past four years, the city has maintained funding at $191,228, and the board has consistently requested an increase of this amount. At $191,228, the return on investment to the city is estimated around $783,682. With total expenditures by organizations and audiences at approximately $23,648,637. Of the 33 organizations receiving grants this year, 36% have their residents in Coral Gables, meaning a loss of 64% represented organizations if grants are limited to organizations that are housed within the city of Coral Gables. 16 venues are used throughout Coral Gables, and another 10 at University of Miami. I have for your review some documentation, and then I'm ready for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
I have a, once you're done, then maybe the answer is there.
Thank you.
Mike, quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned the percentage of organizations with business addresses in Coral Gables.
Yes.
Do we have a percentage, and I'm sorry, it's just a lot of paper. Percentage of number of organizations in Coral Gables that applied?
So, I'm not sure if I have that answered enough, staff can answer that question? The number of Coral Gables organizations that have applied to the funding?
I mean, not everybody gets a grant, I assume, that request.
Correct.
So I'm curious to see how many Coral Gables-based organizations actually apply compared to those organizations that are not based, don't have a home address. Just to match, to see the interest and the involvement.
Got it.
Right, so this year, actually, all of the applicants to the program were funded.
Yes.
Which is a little unusual, like you said, there's usually a percentage that aren't. So this year, there were 33 total, and of those, as Ms. Burgos said, 36% are within Coral Gables, which numerically ends up being around 12. Six of those are the ones that are in our upper tier venueed organizations, the ones that we've been considering Coral Gables-based, that we're talking about changing how the, the term is used. But those are the larger venues, over $500,000 for their operating funds. Their main, their main function is the arts, et cetera.
Wonderful. Has it been a year already since we last did this? Or is it my imagination that we did it not that long ago?
The process starts at this time.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's that?
The process starts at this time, so...
I'm just flying.
So, I, I met with, I met with staff.
It didn't come to you a year ago, it came a few months, you're a few months away from the one-year mark.
Yeah, we're almost at the one-year mark. But, but they're, like, like, she said, the application process happens now, so we'd like to let the organizations know on the front end.
So I, I met with staff, and I had a conversation in reverse to the cultural grants. We're spending a lot of money on this, and I think it's important. We're trying to draw as many people as you can see by the Moon Project, by some of the cultural projects that we're doing with, with different embassies. In an effort to, again, make our downtown as inviting as possible, make it financially viable, make it, make it a real profit center for the city, that's the important part about it. I do have some concerns, like I have had in the past, about money that's going to entities outside the city. We were talking, you and I were talking about, how do we ensure that every dollar that we give, of taxpayer dollars, goes to really benefit the city? Are we asking them for some sort of audited financials that shows where our $5,000 check went, and how that money was used? And I, I really want to see it, like, I want to understand if that's the case. Or are we just asking for simple email with some receipts? I want to understand it.
They, they have a final report, and actually, it's now a two-tiered process. They are required to do an interim final report at the time that the application is submitted, so that would be coming up in a, in a few months. And then for their final report, and this is all through our grant platform, it's an application system, it's a, an extensive form where we compare their answers to what they put in the original application. And they are required to submit receipts and invoices and check receipts, specifically for all the funding that was spent. And then also, they are required to show us their marketing materials where they've credited the city.
Do they give, do they give any tickets to their, to their events, to Gables residents, to students, to, to anybody who's, who's interested, since we provide them taxpayer dollars?
Many, many of them do, we do encourage them to use the Golden Ticket Program and the Culture Shock Program that are both free and reduced fee tickets through the county's Cultural Development Affairs Program, so we do encourage that. Many of the events are free already, this year, 35% are, are free. There are expenses, as you know, to do these productions, some of them higher than others. So, all those things are taken into account.
Who receives the largest amount of money in regards to our cultural grants?
I don't want to guess, it's our upper tier, those six, those six highest ones, so it's... So it's, so it's going to be, you know, Actors Playhouse...
The ones that are located in museums, the institutional ones. Absolutely, absolutely, the ones that are in Coral Gables. Headquartered ones gets the most funding because they can apply for more money than the other organizations as well.
So what is, what is the Montgomery Botanical Center?
The Montgomery Botanical Center is located just south of Fairchild Tropical Garden. So they are a, basically, a museum of plants, they specialize in palms and cycads. They are open to the public mostly by appointment. They do have a couple of, of announced public events where you do not need to make an appointment to go in. They go around the world collecting seeds and plants, they're a phenomenal organization. And the board has consistently had discussions with them about how to have, how to expand their public programming.
Yeah, the Montgomery, you should go on a tour one day.
Yes, it's beautiful.
It was associated with Fairchild, and was the reason why we have Fairchild Tropical Garden as well. And its mission is to make sure that we have a good seed bank.
Right.
And it provides a significant service to areas around the world where you have devastation, and they have to get back some of the original seeds. They hand pollinate a lot of the palms to make sure that they're not cross-pollinated with something else. That's part of their mission, and they do educational...
Yes.
Tours as well. Is that what this funding request is for, the educational aspect of it?
Since they're in the upper tier, they do have operating funds.
It's general operating funds because they're in the upper tier of those grants. So the grants are split between two categories. The, the ones that are, have a certain operating fund, which is $500,000 or more. And they're located headquartered in Coral Gables. Those applicants able to get general operating funds, not program-specific. The other ones that apply for specific programming are smaller, not, they don't meet those criteria. And their funding is specific to programming within city limits.
So, they don't have, they're not open to the public only on certain times?
They are open to the public.
When?
By appointment, and then they have some events...
So I have to call and make an appointment?
Yes, except for a, a handful of things, like they do a plant sale, they, they have certain days that, you know, they publicize where the gates are open. And a lot of that, from what I understand, is really for security purposes of the collection. It's a very high-level collection of the palms and cycads.
What's the cultural aspect of it? I understand the educational, but...
It's a museum, basically, a museum of plants is how they, how it's described.
Botanists come and visit this place from around the world to see these specimens.
It's, they're amazing.
Do, have we ever considered helping foreign consulates that are based here in Coral Gables that have, generally don't have a lot of, have a lot of money, but they have a lot of really interesting activities that they could do if they had some support? Have we ever thought about partnering with them, the Guatemalans, the Spanish, the Italians, or some of the others, to do certain things?
Any nonprofit arts, any nonprofit organization can apply for program-based funding.
Yes.
And then also, the, the mayor has generously started a new program specifically to work with consulates and our, our foreign leaders and the different cultural programs that they're doing. A while back, the board had decided to eliminate funding for festivals because they found them to be more commercial in aspect. So in many ways, the, the program that Mayor Lago has started has, has been able to fulfill that niche, and it still is very strict, from what I understand, about adhering to the cultural aspects of it.
We actually turned down a consulate this past week, who had a, not a full-blown consulate, but I, I, I thought that they were, maybe next year they can hopefully get funding, but they had to tweak the project for this year. Look, I, my only concerns, and I think we've, we have a lot on the docket today that I want to get to. I have concerns about, about the Botanical Center not being open to the public. Coral Gables residents, this is your tax dollars, I want to make sure that they have access to it. And making appointments to me is not gonna, is not gonna satisfy me, so... While I'm, I'm a huge believer, a huge believer in trees, plants, my dad has hundreds of fruit trees in the backyard, I think that's critically important, hundreds of orchids. I think that we need to have, we need to have certified, certified, validated accounting of every single entity that we give money to, not just here are my receipts and here's on an Excel spreadsheet. I want it to be something that is, you know, where an accountant puts their name on it, kind of like where you submit your, your taxes, or when you, or when you go...
I'm sorry.
They do?
They are required to submit their 990s, their tax forms, so they are required to submit that.
As part of the application.
Obviously, if they're from outside, it's not going to specify on that document where the Coral Gables money is, but that is where the receipts and the, the check copies are going to be.
How much funding are we talking about for Montgomery? I, I've been in there several times, so it's not that hard to get in.
So one document I don't have in front of me today. My apologies.
My bigger issue is I, I'm not sure I'm under... Commissioner, this is not a cultural art.
It's not a cultural...
I, like, I'm looking at this, music, theater, film, opera, children's chorus, music society, symphony...
Guitar foundation.
Botanical Center. Darns.
They have, do have functions there, so if we could get some more detail about where this funding is going, I think that would go a far way.
I'm sure they're wonderful, like, I'm not, but it's not a cultural arts program.
The, the funding, I was just going to say, the range of funding is, I think the minimum is $1,000 or $1,500. And the maxima they can apply for is $15,000. No grant organization, none of the organizations ever received that, that amount.
If they were, if they were applying...
So the amounts are relatively small.
If they were applying for a grant with the top group to do an event that had a cultural arts component to it, this would be a different discussion, maybe? But they're under general, you're saying it goes to their general operating?
All of those...
What percentage of their general operating falls under the category of cultural arts?
Because I remember we had this very similar...
All of it.
No, of the botanical center?
The Botanical Center is, they position themselves as a museum, as a historical collection of plants.
Other than their title, because right below them is the Low Art Museum, the Coral Gables Museum. That's a stretch, I'm sorry. I, I'm sure they're wonderful, I think NASA is fantastic, but this, that's not what this is. It's, it's like, this is music, arts, film, et cetera. I, I have utmost respect for what they're doing, but I just don't see how they belong on the cultural arts.
We had a very similar situation with Little Carver and the food, and the food event that was happening, they... We had a very similar situation with Little Carver and the food, and the food event that was happening, they, they had music, they had, they had a bunch of different things that dealt with culture and, and that was not provided a grant from what I understand, correct?
Well, the reason for that was that they, the, that application didn't meet the, the numerical criteria to be funded. When you looked across whomever, you know, everybody that, that reviewed their application, that was the reason for, they didn't meet that minimum requirement.
They didn't get, they didn't get a good score.
Correct. That's correct.
Well, somehow Montgomery got in here.
They ultimately were funded.
But they were ultimately funded, yes.
I'd like to see, quick points, I know we have to move on. I'd like to see, in the future, two tiers. Lower tier, four Little Carver types of organizations, not to compete necessarily with Lowe's and, you know, some of the big boys. Find a way to lower tier so that these smaller organizations can qualify.
Sure.
They may not meet the criteria, the point system, when they compete with huge organizations. So I'd like to see a two-tiered system. The other thing I'd like to do, ask, and I think I asked it before, when you do the scoring to identify who gets it, is there, is there a set of points available if you are a Coral Gables-based organization? Because if not, I think you should add a point, like, five points or whatever point system.
I think that's a great idea.
No, no, it is a good idea.
And then on top of that, the mayor made a valid point about tickets available. UM, we have a development agreement with UM and they provide free tickets through our community recreation department. I know some of these don't have tickets, they just, you know, you come in, you go, but I think we should require them to, when there are tickets available, make it mandatory that they provide X number. And maybe through Fred and Catalina's department, make available, as our rule, tickets that are open to the public. And then finally, well, you know, we hit it. I think the key for me is the point system and obviously the two tiers, because I want the smaller organizations to have a chance.
Sure.
Like, if we have a pickup basketball game, we gotta play against the Heat, we may score a basket, but I don't think we're gonna win. I want, I want the little, I want the little organization, I shoot well from outside, but I want the smaller organizations to have a chance.
Yeah, and if I can add something to, to Commissioner's comments, I would like for, just to give you an idea of how difficult it would be to have audited financials resulting just from this event, not the companies, not the entities audited financials. I want to see a sole document that says they received 2,500 and this is the way it was broken down, certified by a public accountant. Because when you, when you have to do that, when you have to do that, like, when you sign and seal documents, like, plans, it's your license on the line. And you want to make sure.
I understand. But I'm gonna share with you that the cost of doing an audited financial statement is extremely high. And if we follow the criteria that some federal agencies do, they accept under penalty of perjury, I attest that the paper is.
Which they do.
Which they do, yes.
That's the whole point of the conversation.
As long as it's sworn to like that, you know, if federal agencies accept financial statements that way, so small companies don't go broke just getting an audit financial statement, we're gonna defeat the purpose of this program.
Yes.
That's a very good point.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
Very good.
And we can work with the city attorney about, even if we, maybe it's a notarized document or if the online.
An affidavit.
Yes.
You know, maybe. Something that we can.
So we're gonna move on to the next item, but I brought this forward and I had a meeting with staff because I think this is important, that we clear and we have a very good idea of how we're moving forward. What else we have?
Can I say one last thing very quickly? Please. Very quick. I, just on this topic of Coral Gables base versus not Coral Gables base, I kind of view this a little bit through a different lens, which is as a benefit to our residents. And so, you know, I think it's a service to our residents to have, you know, a upper echelon of organization come to an event in Coral Gables for Coral Gables residents. So even if they're not Coral Gables based, they're doing, the event is Coral Gables based.
Yes.
And this whole top group falls into that category, so like, I think as, as residents, they say, oh, wow, I can go see, you know, the Florida Grand Opera or, you know, the Greater Miami U Symphony in Coral Gables. And I think from that perspective, it is Coral Gables based, because the event itself is, so I'm, I'm okay with that. But I think you want, I think everybody's point is to try to strike a bit of a balance and have a little bit of both.
Right, so what we are hoping to do is get specifics, maybe through a resolution, so we know what changes to incorporate. And I, and I wonder, Commissioner Menendez, to your point, whether if we do the additional point system for organizations that have their address, their business address in Coral Gables, if that would fulfill the need for a second for another tier, because I'm not sure how we would differentiate small, most of our, we do have quite a few low, you know, we have quite a few small organizations.
But if I may, you can go to UPS, you can go to the mail, and you can get a P O box. I want it to be a real.
What's Sunviz?
I know, I was just thinking.
They do Sunviz?
Saying, you know, I'm a cynic, I understand, but I want it to be a real, real Coral Gables entity that's gaining from this, that offers tickets to our, to our residents, that offers tickets to our students, to the elderly, to people who want to enjoy this.
So residency aside, all of the, just, I want to reiterate, all of the programming that is funded happens in the city of Coral Gables. All of the tickets are people that are coming in, Coral Gables residents, and maybe even outside to bring more funding into the city, but everything happens and nothing that's funded does not happen in the city of Coral Gables. And the ticket issue, actually, thank you for bringing that up again. One of the concerns that the board may have is that some of these organizations are very small, right? And so the, the, about 60% of their funding comes from earned income, right? And the rest is from actual funding, from granting and things like that. So we have to figure out what would be appropriate for organizations to give out tickets for free.
It could be instead of a fixed number, a percentage, so even if it's a big organization or a small, the percentage applies across the board and it should be fair.
To residents.
But I think that we need to, we need to, we're not gonna iron this out today. I think we need to come back with some, with some ideas and then we'll have the resolution on the next commission meeting. The purpose of doing the, the, the funding for the consulates, we were trying to do four consulates a year, we've done two, was, if you look at it, they're local consulates, the event is free, the El Muertos drew thousands of people here, the event is free. It's an opportunity for you to enjoy themselves, it's cultural, it's immersive, and we're talking about, talking about the city of Coral Gables. And that is something that really draws me. If we're gonna use public funds, it's gotta be, you know, geared towards that. Either it's free or we give a discount to residents. It happens in Coral Gables, it's cultural, like the Vice Mayor said. And I'm more than flexible, like what the Commissioner mentioned, Anderson, about, you don't wanna, how was I saying? You don't want to be the perfect, you don't want to be the enemy of, of the good by trying to be perfect, how was it? Something to that effect? Something to that effect, so we can find common ground, but let's move in a direction where, again, where the tax dollars that we're getting from residents are being best used in our city for the residents, okay?
And answering your question, I still think that, I still think that my idea of a second tier would be, and I know they have to have events that are open to the public, but schools, small children's theater, things like that, that, you know, you get a small organization, you get a small school that wants to do something, to go against, you know, you know, I said, Gables Museum, Lowe's. It's, it's, you know, it's minor league, major league. And I'm sure we can think of the consulate of, of a second tier for organizations like that, that aren't the well-established, been around for 40 years, that have benefactors contributing. So I, you know, I'd like to explore that and see what we can come up with, but I just want to balance things out.
Right, are you, looking at this sheet here, has an annual operating budget over half a million dollars.
Right.
Is that what you're directing this at?
So there are two tiers presently, I'm sorry, Commissioners, right now the grant does have two tiers. There's one tier, which is the core cultural arts grantees, which is the Actors Playhouse, the Coral Gate, that's the one with the 500,000 and above. And there's this, and that's the general operating fund grant, and then there's that second tier, which is specific for programming. So it sounds like you want a sub-tier within that second tier for programming?
I just think when you do scoring.
Sure.
Some organizations are more, better equipped to maximize the score in certain categories just because they've been around for 10, 20, 30 years. And you have these smaller organizations, small schools or children's theaters, that don't have the admin, the staff to put everything together in a certain way. So I just want to give those smaller organizations an opportunity to qualify because they don't have 100 people's staff. They might have a few people that are doing 50 tasks at the same time. I just want to, I want to make sure that we help everyone.
Sure.
That's just my perspective.
Just as formal as a, yes.
We got, we got a long commission meeting.
I, I understand.
We got a long commission meeting, we haven't even gotten to the, the bread and butter here. So can we, can we have staff, sorry?
I just want to make sure that we, we know the direction to bring back to the.
I don't think they're gonna give us one direction. Yeah, just do it now.
Right now, I was gonna give it to you. It's gonna be really simple. You ready for it? Have a meeting with each one of the Commissioners, we've given you a lot of information. Bring us a resolution that crafts what every single one of the Commissioners have said. I've been pretty clear among my comments. And we will put it on the next commission agenda for, to get it addressed, okay? If not, we'll never get to the end of this meeting today. Okay?
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Beyond grateful for your hard work on this, it's very important. Thank you. Before we move on, I'd like to recognize Mayor of Barquisimeto, Venezuela, who's here with us today. His name is Raúl Antonio Colmenares. Por favor levántese, por favor. Muchas gracias por estar con nosotros, es un placer y un honor tener usted aquí hoy, okay? Muchas gracias por estar ahí con nosotros. Que Dios le bendiga. Hasta luego. Moving on to C2, discussion regarding golf carts. Very simple, very brief. You're seeing a proliferation of golf carts. I bought one, I got a moke, it's great, my girls love it. It's a great time. We need to really find out a way to, if we're gonna continue to see this happen in the city as other communities are becoming more golf cart communities, what is gonna be our parameters and what does the state allow? And I'm gonna ask the city, city attorney to put that on the record.
So, so currently, Mayor, there's a distinction between golf carts and the low-speed vehicles. The low-speed vehicles, they can travel, they're, they're defined as vehicles that can go up to a maximum speed of 25 miles per hour. They have to be registered as a, as a vehicle with the state. Golf carts have a maximum speed of 20 miles per hour, they are not registered, as you know. Low-speed vehicles can travel basically on any road where the maximum speed limit is 35 miles per hour. The golf carts can only travel on designated roads. So what you're seeing is that some municipalities are designating certain roads within their municipalities to allow for the golf carts, subject to certain registrations with the municipality.
So I wanted to bring to your attention, because it's important, I think there's a lot of confusion in regards to golf carts, low-speed vehicles, mine is a low-speed vehicle, it has a license, excuse me, it has a license plate, which has to be renewed. So I think that you're probably getting emails and probably phone calls from residents who are interested, and you're seeing a lot more of them in neighborhoods. And this is something that I wanted to bring your attention because, so you have the information in regards to what is a low-speed vehicle and what is a golf cart? And that low-speed vehicles are already allowed in the city. And I think that's critical. So there is no need for legislation. Now, if we're gonna allow golf carts without a license plate, I think it's a problem because someone's gonna park a license plate in the middle of downtown in a parking, in a parking space, how do you know how to, you have to, you still have to pay for a meter. If someone parks on your swale, there has to be some sort of enforcement. So I just wanted to put that on the record and, you know.
So I'm gonna ask for one other area of clarification from the city attorney. And I've been on bike paths and there have been low-speed vehicles or golf carts on there. All of them have been respectful, so I have no complaint about them, but are they allowed on bike paths?
So on bike paths, I know on, they're allowed on certain sidewalks if there's certain conditions and there's an ordinance allowing it, which we don't allow them in our city. But on the bike paths, I, I also don't think that they're allowed, but the chief seems to have more information.
No, so, so they were respectful, they didn't bother me, they pulled off to the side, but they're still not allowed by state law.
Correct. I mean, they can cross over it, and again, the, the, the way we decide is if the car is, if the golf cart is registered and has a license tag and has to have seat belts, turn signals, then it is considered a moving vehicle and it has to pay to park and can be on a roadway within the city, with the exceptions that's posted, whether it be 826, I-95, things like that. The slow-speed vehicles, the slower ones, have to have the triangle on the back. Where you see children driving those, which we know some of our neighboring jurisdictions have had lots of traumatic accidents with kids being those out on the streets, so that's, that's pretty much the rule of thumb that we do.
So we can't limit either one to, let's say, golf carts shouldn't be in the central business district. We can't.
No, anything, yeah, anything that would do that would be a code and we're just enforcing the state statutes.
So the, the golf carts currently are not allowed, meaning not, not the, the low-speed vehicles, the golf carts are not allowed on any of our city roads?
Yes.
So because I saw a low-speed vehicle not that long ago on Ponce turning onto Miracle Mile, that's allowed?
That's perfectly fine. So I just wanted to provide clarity and have our chief, along with our city attorney, address it and make sure that people have a little bit more information, because I know we're getting phone calls about it, okay? Thank you very much. I'm gonna jump to C4. We already discussed this in regards to parks. Salvador Park is having some issues. I'm getting calls from residents saying that there's certain individuals there, there were certain parents that were, that were kind of a little bit nervous the other day because there was one individual taking pictures of the children. So I think that the way that we can remediate this issue is putting a camera there and people knowing the facts that, again, you're under, you're under surveillance, there was police there, police was notified, police took action. But that's becoming a little bit, you know, it's an area on the outskirts of our city, almost next to a school. So people were a little bit nervous in regards to that kind of interaction. So, again, that's just part of the plan of adding the defibrillators and obviously adding the, the camera with potentially a light on it. With C3, I don't know if you've gotten calls, I've gotten calls from residents and I've seen it with my own eyes about Catalonia and Majorca Park, the dogs are unleashed. So, again, we're gonna have to deal with this issue. What is, what is the will of the commission?
They're on the wrong side, yeah, they're on the wrong side of the park unleashed, and I've seen it too.
Yeah. No, let's increase the fine.
And I, I think too, it has to say no dogs on, on the, on the, because unfortunately, there are dog owners that don't pick up. And even if they do pick up on the children's side, it's gonna be messy.
The reality is that even if we have parks that are no dogs allowed, because behavior is behavior, they're gonna do it. So there should be consequences, and we do have consequences, but obviously they're not strong enough to deter behavior. So I'm all for increasing, maybe the administration comes back, how we can increase and, and make it more impactful. You can't, you, you can try to, by law and legislation, change people's behavior and those that do things the right way will abide. But unfortunately, there are a few people that will do whatever they want because they feel empowered that they can do whatever they want, even if it puts children in harm's way.
Well, I think you have to have that together with the cameras, because we can't have people out there 24/7 and force.
No, I agree. I agree completely.
So you have the cameras and I don't know what our fines are right now, so.
But I think, I think when we add the cameras and you, you know, you give the proper signage and staff, staff's on top of it, we add the additional fining, I think that people will come into compliance, so. But it's happening and I'm getting calls, people saying, listen, we're, we're accommodating the dog lovers, which I think is a great idea. We're, we've adding, we're adding more dog parks, there's more, there's more in the pipeline. Let's respect the fact that there's kids, especially young toddlers on the grass. Last thing you want is to have the dogs mixing with the kids.
I'd like, you know, I, I took a walk late afternoon as the sun was setting around the youth center and around that whole area and I, and now I guess I'm more dog-aware. And the amount of people walking their dogs was amazing, how many people today have dogs taking walks. But I, I still would like the administration to come back to us to talk about what the fines are for unleashed dogs, because maybe we need to tweak it.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Mr. Clerk?
Out of favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to, moving on to F2.
F2 is an ordinance of the city commission amending Chapter 62 Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places to reduce abandoned construction signage and barricades in connection with approved work on the right-of-way and amending Section 1-7 entitled penalties to include additional penalties for violations, providing for severability clause, repealer provision, codification and providing for an effective date.
Are there any changes?
There have been no changes.
I'll have, entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, moving on to public comment.
Mr. Mayor, first speaker today is Ms. Maria Cruz.
Two minutes, please, if possible.
Well, since I have to leave to pick up my granddaughters, I'm gonna use the public comments time to talk about F4, because it says I could. Okay, so I am here to tell him. Okay, so I am here to tell you that you really do not need this ordinance, it's a duplication of something that is not necessary, because, because Labor Relations was part of Human Resources, till 1516. In 1617, it was moved to, under the city manager, as a division. It was never made a department, how do I know? Because Mr. O'Keefe checked, and it was moved as a budget issue, but it was never, the charter was never followed, the charter says, the commission could have split the department, could have created a new department by a vote of at least three commissioners with an ordinance, it was never done. So you don't need to do this, you can just put it together, back to normal, and that would be a good savings measure, Mr. Manager, because you would have one director instead of two, so instead of spending 22, 23, let me give you the figures fast, 22, 23, we have $171,000 for Labor Relations, and 196, I believe, for Human Resources, if you combine everything under Human Resources, it's under 196, instead of 171 plus 196, good job.
Thank you very much, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, just before we move on, the vote, the change was approved by the commission when they adopted the budget for that year, by ordinance.
Yes, again, I knew that, but at the end of the day, it's.
Next speaker is Mr. David Renshaw.
Sir, good morning.
Good morning, and good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon, I apologize.
David Renshaw, Teamsters Union Business Representative on behalf of the bargaining unit employees at City of Coral Gables, just wanted to take a quick moment, good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Commission Body, and City Manager. Today is a day that we have been waiting for, the Evergreen Wage Study analysis is going to be produced, provided for us today, and I just wanted to take a quick moment to let you folks know that we look forward to receiving it, digesting it, asking any questions that we may have, and looking forward to a fruitful outcome, and I just wanted to say thank you for going through the study, completing the study, and hopefully adhering to the study. With that said, again, just want to say thank you, be well.
Very much, have a wonderful day, thank you for being here, Mr. Clerk.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Please close the public comment, moving on to F3, on second reading, sponsored by Commissioner Anderson.
F3 is an ordinance of the city commission amending the city code, Chapter 1, General Provisions, Section 1-7 entitled penalties to include additional penalties for violations of Section 74-241 entitled motorized scooters on sidewalks, and Section 74-2 prohibiting skateboard use generally, providing for repeated provisions, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date. There have been no changes since first reading, but our intern, Ms. Rodriguez, can answer any questions if you have.
Have there been any changes?
No, there have not been.
No changes.
Very much, how are you enjoying your time here at the city?
Very, I'm enjoying it very much.
Well, blessed to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your efforts in drafting this, and I'll move it.
I'll second.
It is a public hearing item, do we have any speakers?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, I'm going to jump to I1, it's a simple one, finish this up, city manager item.
I1 is a resolution of the city commission authorizing the acceptance of grant funds of the amount of $1 million from the Florida Department of Transportation for the last-mile transit stop improvements program, authorizing execution of the grant contract, and authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2022 to 23 annual budget to recognize the million-dollar grant as revenue and to appropriate such funds to put toward the cost of the program.
Congratulations, Mr. Manager, very well done.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, this is, we're using this money for 42 trolley stops to make them ADA-compatible, and also adding eight roof structures to the, to the trolley stop. This is a last-transit stop improvement program, and so I think we can very effectively use it for a transit system through, through a trolley system.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for always being an advocate on behalf of ADA issues, leading the charge on that, so I just wanted to recognize you for that.
Well, thank you, yeah, and then I spoke with the manager, and although it's a million dollars, doesn't cover the full price tag, so we still, we still need to continue our mission in Tallahassee.
It's about a 45, they cover about 55% of the cost, so there is, so, and we cover the other 45%.
We'll get there.
Okay, okay, good work.
Listen, I hate to say it, I mean, we were always very strong on ADA issues, but I mean, brought a lot of light to that, so it's something that I have to, you know, we've got to give credence to that, so thank you.
Well, I'll move it, so we can.
We move about 1.25 million people in our trolley a year, so it's a fantastic improvement to, to our system.
I'll second.
Yeah, I'll enjoy the roof covering when it's raining.
Mr. Clerk, we have a first and a second?
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, F6.
F6 is an ordinance of the city commission providing for text amendments to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code, Article 16, definitions, by amending the definition of carport, and providing for a repealer provision, severability clause, codification, and an effective date. This is a public hearing item.
Are there any public comment?
No, sir.
Can we close the public comment? How are you?
Good morning, Jennifer Garcia, city planner, this is the carport item, we're skipping to that one?
Yes.
Yes, F6, yes.
We got two items up to this, trying to get done by 12:30.
Perfect.
We can meet our lunch.
This is a cleanup, right now, in the Coral Gables zoning code, and they're the single-family, we, we don't count any detached garage or carport against your FAR, basically, but the definition remains that has to be detached, I'm sorry, attached, this is clean definition to allow it to be detached.
Okay.
I think what happened was that there is a glitch between the body of the code and the definition, we're allowed detached garages and carports in the body of the code, and the definition defined carports as attached to the actual structure, I think the intent was to allow both, and so we're just clarifying, we're just taking care of this glitch in the definition.
We have a first and a second.
We have a first and a second, let's roll.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, F5?
F5 is an ordinance of the city commission providing for text amendments to the City of Coral Gables Official Zoning Code by amending Article 6, Landscape, Section 6-103, Landscape General Requirements, and Article 16, Definitions, providing for definition, requirements, and review processes to utilize artificial turf within athletic fields in the special use zoning district, providing conditional use review and approval when such artificial turf athletic fields are visible from the street, clarifying minimal usage and requirements of artificial turf, and providing for repeated provision, severability clause, codification, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Jennifer Garcia, city planner, and currently, our zoning code only allows artificial turf to be in the rear of single-family property, and prohibited anywhere else in any other zoning district, so this is going to be allowing athletic fields to have artificial turf, if not visible from the right of way from the street, but if it is visible from the right-of-way, then they have to go through a conditional use process, which requires DRC, planning, zoning, and city commission.
Perfect, makes sense. Makes sense, can I get a motion?
It's a public hearing item.
No members of the public want to speak?
We got three motions.
You can pick.
All right, who moved it?
I'm staying quiet.
Commissioner Anderson?
I moved it.
I'll second.
Kason, Mayor Kason moved it.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Move on to the final item, F4.
F4 is an ordinance of the city commission combining the Human Resources Department and the Labor Relations and Risk Management Department in accordance with Section 17 of the city charter amending fiscal year 2023 budget to reflect that change, this is a public hearing item.
Mayor, Commissioners, I think, I think our labor director was always in succession planning for the, for the proposed retirement of our prior HR director, she's done a phenomenal job in labor, she's special counsel to the city attorney for labor, and I think, and she's been working very closely the past few years with HR, so I think it's a, it's a great move for the city, and it consolidates Human Resources, Labor Relations, and Risk Management.
I see no issues. I've had the pleasure of interacting with Raquel on multiple occasions, and like I mentioned before, it's been a true privilege, it's been a pleasure, you're a consummate professional, so I think that we're very lucky to have you here in the city, and I want to say thank you for all your hard work. Does anybody have any comments?
I will mirror your comments, and.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. With that being said, that comes, unless I missed something, the end of our agenda for the February 28, 2023 meeting, we made our 12:30 lunch, hey, I'd like to thank everyone for their efforts, Commissioner, Menendez, you have anything you'd like to say?
Just real quick, is my poster ready? Come on, you got to be ready, there it is, Saturday's going to be an exciting day for Coral Gables, you have the carnival on the mile, you have the farmer's market, and if you want to get out of the sun.
And the wing eating, and the wing.
On the wing, no, no, that's, that's if you want to eat well, or a lot, then you go with the mayor, for sure. So at noon, at the Art Cinema, I'm showing 1974, actually, I think it's one of the funniest movies in the 70s, Barbra Streisand, Ryan O'Neal, and Madeleine Kahn, What's Up Doc, it's truly, I describe it if Mel Brooks, the Marx Brothers, and Woody Allen had a baby, it'd be that movie. So it's free, free popcorn, free soda, heck, even free beer, I'll throw that in, but if you want to see a good movie and laugh for a while, you're welcome to join us.
No, the price, oh my God, I don't know if I can.
I don't know, it's expensive.
It is, it is.
I'm charging the manager, though.
Commissioner Anderson?
Well, I participated in the DCC challenge, and all, overall, we raised 8.4 million dollars to.
Wow.
Fight cancer, and it was really good for weight loss, so if they had gluten-free wings, I would take you up on it, I can put the weight back on.
Thank you for, thank you for representing the city in the Dolphins Challenge, that was great, U M, U M is a great recipient, and they do a lot of, they do a lot with that money, saving people's lives, and obviously, with the research, it's incredible, so.
It was very well-run, I have no complaints about it, just, are you going to have gluten-free wings available?
Mayor? That's your vice mayor?
Really quick, actually, Billy, can, they put up the photo I sent you?
I'll put it up now.
If it's easy, if it's not, it's no big deal.
It's up.
There you go.
There we go.
So that's in Naples, just to kind of give an example, I'm not saying we're going to have that kind of light fixture, because that's a whole other project, although I think.
But it's up where the lights are.
You should endeavor to that one day.
You should endeavor.
But in the meantime, you could do something, you know, I think that's more up to our standards than what the mayor showed earlier.
I like it.
Yes, yes, so thank you, Vice Mayor.
We're going to replace him, we should look at upgrading him.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that to our attention, I think that this, again, these are the little things, like what we're doing with the sidewalks, what we're doing with our landscaping, as you can tell, downtown, what code enforcement is dealing with facades,